I'm going to call the January 23rd, 2024 regular meeting of the town council to order. We'll start with allegiance and long time.
But who like? The United States and to the Republic, which stands one nation on a bed in the business law. And that's for a call.
Thank you. All right. A lot of his things, so we're gonna. We're gonna get it through, bring it through it all. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us a little bit. The next item on our agenda is proclamations and presentations, of which we have none. And that brings us to public petitions, communications, and public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. If you are on Zoom and you wish to participate, you could either raise your little Zoom hand or press star nine. And if you're in the room, please come up to the table and we'd ask for you to give us your full name and address. So we'll start in the room and go back and forth. Is there anyone here who would like to make a comment?
Okay. John Laffin, 168 Mountain Spring Road. Hello, Town Council. Normally each week I get up here and express my frustration and overall general concern about the actions, or lack thereof, over my contaminated water, my property, and what is being done to remedy this issue. This week, I'm happy to report for the first time that I'm satisfied with the progress over the past couple of weeks. Testing that was done earlier in the month by Langen engineers has been analyzed and a determination has been made to pivot and look at a different approach to remedy this issue. What was initially thought. Mike and Mike Wilkinson reached out to me to discuss this change in approach for my well based on the analysis. In speaking with Mike, it does not seem this will substantially change the timeline that was previously established. This is good to hear, and the biggest adjustment is that the insurance company and the Road Salt Task Force will need to be kept abreast of the situation and may need to approve this new approach. That being said, Mike does not think that either of these entities would add any meaningful time to diagnose and determine a new course of action to correct my problem. While I am truly happy about the progress and the communication from the town, I am still concerned that it took 1.5 years after the new well that was drilled on my property and was determined to be non-viable, and a year since the release of the Langen report on my property to make further headway. I hope more progress is made in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to participate? Again, you can raise your hand or press star nine. Nope. Anyone else in the room? Zoom, anyway? Okay. So we will move on to item six, which is public hearing, of which we have none. And then reports of boards and commissions responsible to the council. We start with, I guess, our but didn't read.
Um, no, but I can give you a brief what we're gonna be talking about this. Uh, sure. You want, so well, and Jacob asked, but uh, I'm not gonna buy your house up for me last week, too. So, well, we can start with Thursday, the ARPA. It's, I'm telling you, we're on before, it's coming back to the new ARPA subcommittee. The idea of using the balance of the money, believe it's a little bit over one point. It's 1.2 million, it looks like, to use for the parts facility. Raj, and if I'm right, Lisa, since Lisa is here, that could save us about $500,000 of taxpayers' money. So that's all I really know is a highlight of that. So I can't talk too much more, but that's pretty exciting. And I know Lisa's probably wants to strangle us a little bit because we want to hold off the new council to decide on how to use the balance of the money. Um, so next, Jacob and I, and so firehouse subcommittee, last week, it's only our second meeting. But Jacob and I are really trying to get a grasp of the committee and understand what's going on. So it's our second month in. We talked about, we voted on to install a drainage drainage to divert groundwater with the foundation at Station 340 last Thursday. We see H A is supposed to work on plans and get us the cost and then hopefully bring it back to us in February. Some other like things. Brian's idea actually that once we get the priority list from the finalized with the costs that the fire department's already presented to Brian and others, once we get the cost, figure out and maybe go over to station, what 440 and 440, look at where they want those items in the cost and what it actually looks like. Jacob, did I miss? If you want to talk about the other thing that you brought up, which was the?
Oh, yeah. So I'll just kind of clarifying comment. You've started the drainage shows, we voted to kind of pursue the approach of looking for the drainage. They're gonna, town's gonna research a couple of different ideas for feasibility, but we didn't, we didn't like approve a specific.
No, you're correct. You're correct.
Yeah. Yeah, but I guess otherwise it was, it was good just to see kind of that that was there. And the other thing we, yeah, we talked about was just, um, we've got a pending pending change order up in the queue. And Mike hasn't been spent yet, but we're gonna try to have another section on the agenda packets devoted to pending CEOs that council members and anybody else who's interested in that can just see what what has been approved, but maybe hasn't been executed yet. So the guys that had extra layer of transparency and history, what's going on with the committee.
Yeah, we're also trying to work on getting a timeline going. I know there's only, what's, when did do by?
The, when was the?
What's supposed to be finished?
Mid-March, they, I believe they're gonna try to extend it to early May. That was my guess.
First time I've heard of May.
Yeah, I could be off, but I can't remember, but they'll obviously go through the subcommittee where it happens.
So that was one thing I did ask Brian, I know Megan's out this week, but Katie was kind enough to send us an example of what they use for Birch Grove as a timeline and marking the days and where they're at. So it's not just a timeline of what's happened, but where the next step is and how many days we're gonna get there, and then when it's done, it's marked. So it's always being logged and tracked and people were staying on it. You know, Megan's doing a great job, and I think here and now it's gonna be May. That's pretty bad.
That's not pretty bad, considering all the other things that have happened. And I'm just guessing that's what it is, I have a final day, so strike that.
Okay, I would love to strike that, right?
Yes, that it was, it would be a date. In their mind, that is, they would hope to beat by a plenty when we discussed it, so. But they're, I doubt they're gonna make their date the original date, so it's at the part of the process. There's a lot of fees, and we'll discuss that in the subcommittee, getting a lot of fees that get extended or like basic stuff. Insurance, rental trailers, you know, there's a lot of things.
Okay, so that'd be good to talk about the next agenda, and we'll keep up in this cross. But I don't have anything else with those two subcommittees. Katie, I don't know if any council members have questions for Jacob or I.
Thank you for taking over. I know it's, uh, it's gotta be quite a transition to take over and sort of while projects ongoing. It's challenge enough to do one from the start, so thank you for all your efforts there.
Yeah, and I love that sheet you sent us.
Yeah, from tomato.
Yeah, from tomato, but it's still, and you don't see why we can't still do something like that.
Yep, awesome. So I'll give an update then on Road Salt Task Force. We are having a public meeting this Thursday in two days here in town chambers. This is a special town council meeting. And we are going to be presenting information to the public on the studies that have been done. The efforts that the town has made to date, and then next steps. So that will be on Thursday, starting at 6:30. Yeah, yeah, I think 6:30. And it's a hybrid meeting, so anyone who can't attend in person can attend virtually. I am glad to hear that the homeowner, one of these properties is, things are moving forward. I do think the committee is committed to, Task Force is committed to meeting as necessary if there are more developments for any particular property. Did I miss anything, Brad?
No.
Okay. So then a little, any questions on Road Salt?
No, I think I'm doing a great job, and I look forward to Thursday.
Yeah, it should be very, there's a lot of information, so it should be very informative. Next is reports of town council liaisons. I don't know, do you have any meetings?
I do.
Awesome, you might tell us.
So I met with the conservation commission the first time so far. Having, having a hurdle with a chair that had stepped down just due to some health issues, which we got escorted away, which is really, really good. Kind of a cool fact for everybody, we had 388 hours last year of trail days of folks in the community and trail stewards stepping up and kind of maintaining our beautiful trails here in Tallinn. You know, 41% of that was principally due to water, repair for water-related issues. So we do have, uh, we have a very cool event coming up. It's a Bigfoot hunt. Gonna, you know, that's gonna develop more as we get closer to it, trying to get closer to March 31st, maybe April. Trying to get the community involved, kids involved. You know, and things like this certainly help with our budget and keep Tallinn's trails beautiful, so.
Yeah, yeah. So W P C A met last week, we're quarterly meeting. Couple of updates there. They reviewed their budget, it's probably gonna stay the same. So no major financial shifts over there. They're working on connecting the, for building up the lines up to the Santini project. Obviously, there's not buildings there yet, so they got ways to go, but that project has started. And then probably the most relevant for council is one of the longtime members on that committee is stepping down, which is an issue because that committee or that body has a budget and votes up on substantive things. And the only two members now, they do not have a warrant. So anybody knows anybody who's interested and has some experience or interest in public infrastructure, that'd be a great committee. Only meets a few times a year, so not a huge time, time left, but it's definitely important to have at least three people to carry on the work there.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? What about you?
Yeah, I had, yeah, sure. All the things. So I had a commission with people with disabilities last week. They understand why we removed $400,000 of ARPA over to cap, or at least I'm happy that it's staying somewhere. About introduce Teresa, excuse me, Brian, if I say her, Krista, so how you say her name?
Sure.
Sure. She is her new assistant director. She comes from Leveal Children's Hospital, so she has a different view. She's definitely not younger. Younger, I don't know what the word I'm looking for. She's a much younger person, so hopefully she has younger ideas for the town as well. We talked about goals for 2024 and just future presentations for the year. So it was a pretty late meeting.
Okay. Jen, did you have any meetings?
I had no meetings, permanent celebration committees meeting as we speak, so I'll get an update for next meeting.
Awesome, thank you. Chris?
Yeah, I had planning and zoning yesterday, just a couple of things. They discussed farm side re-regulations, so I think selling beverages that were not made on the premises, they just, they didn't make any final decisions on that. They just discussed it. They also had a discussion around affordable housing and how to meet the state's goal 100%, or whether that's feasible for Tallinn. So that's all I've got.
Joe?
Can you hear me? Okay, I can't seem to get my video to work. So the Water Commission canceled their meeting for last week and I met with the Road Salt Task Force, which I think Katie did a good job summarizing what went on in that meeting.
Awesome.
That was it.
Okay. I have a couple.
I was just gonna say everyone mentioned that.
Yeah, yeah, that, thank you, I'm going to. Jacob and I had a leadership meeting with the Board of Ed Chair and Vice Chair on the 11th. I think that went pretty well, where we talked about really establishing lines of communication between the boards. The Chair of the Board of Ed was kind enough to send over a budget calendar, which I sent out to all the town council members who, you're aware of the meetings that are happening. The Board, Board of Ed Chair also flagged ones that he thought might be important for council members to either attend or watch or read the minutes of, so like, that was really helpful to get that perspective. We are gonna meet again on the 12th of February, I think that's before they finalize their budget, just to kind of touch base and also make sure we're on the same page for the joint meeting, which is the 22nd, maybe, that's off the top of my head, so it's the third week of February. The, I met with CROG, which is the Capital Region Council of Governments. That, they had a meeting on the 10th, which was really more organizational type meeting. There's also new work training and then a meeting tomorrow, which I will attend during lunchtime. I also attended Eastern Highland Health District, which met last week. They passed their budget for the year. Their total budget was a 1.8% increase. The increase to town member contributions is, I think it's $5.59, so. I think that's, that's what it says, so we're gonna go with it. No changes of fees, no changes in service level, and they have a capital budget of $54,000. There's also a few public service announcements from Eastern Highland Health. People who don't have insurance or who are underinsured can get a free COVID vaccine and a flu vex, no, a free COVID vaccine. They are also offering free radon testing at the main office, if you want to pick up a home radon test to do for yourself. They have free COVID tests available, and those tests are also going out to schools and senior centers. And they have a vaccine program for all children, whether they have insurance or not, 18 or younger for COVID and flu. All right, any questions? We did it pretty fast. Awesome. Next, we are on to new business, and again, thank you, everyone, for attending tonight. We do have three agenda items with people coming in to visit with us, so we're gonna get through them as quickly as we can, so we're not asking anyone to stay extra. We are gonna start with the presentation of the annual comprehensive fiscal report for fiscal year 2024.
So each year we're required to have a financial audit to make sure the town is doing everything we're supposed to do. It is captained by our financial director, Lisa Hancock, who's here, along with the agency that conducted it. In your, in your package should be the report, and Lisa will take over from here. Thanks, Lisa.
This evening, we have Vanessa Rosito with us, and you'll see her on camera. She is our audit partner for Clifton Larson and, and Helen, C L A, our audit firm. And she's going to do a presentation this evening, and then I will, and she will be, both of us will be available, questions and answers when she goes through her presentation. Vanessa, if you'd like to begin.
Great, thanks, Lisa, thanks, everyone. I'm gonna share my screen.
Sure. There you go. Yep, there it is.
Hold on, okay, can you see the presentation now?
Yes.
Great, okay, so there's a lot of deliverables with the audit, so I sort of condensed it into a PowerPoint presentation. As Lisa mentioned, if there's questions at the end, I can entertain them. Then if you have, you know, certain specific questions about the financial statements or single audits, but I just thought I would make it easy and summarize them here. So this is our disclaimer, I won't make you read that. Um, as far as the agenda, I'm gonna talk about the terms of the engagement. I'll go over an executive summary, some very high-level financial highlights of the financial statements. I'll talk about the federal and state single audit, and then the governance communication, and then I'll round it out with the upcoming GASP pronouncements for '24 and '25. So as far as the terms of the engagement, we were hired to express opinions on whether the town's basic financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We also express an in relation to opinion on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, which is the federal single audit, and the schedule of expenditures of state financial assistance, which is the state single audit. We also express an opinion on the compliance related to the federal and state award programs that we test and a report on internal control over financial reporting and compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grants. And also provide internal, uh, report on internal control over compliance related to the major federal and state programs that we test. So the results of all of that are as follows. The financial statements, we issued a clean opinion, which is called an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That basically means that the financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with accounting standards. It's the highest form of an opinion that you can receive. We did not have any findings in internal control and compliance, so clean report there. And similarly, for the federal single audit, we issued a clean opinion on the major federal program that we tested. No findings or significant deficiencies in internal control. And state single audit, clean opinion on the state programs that we tested. And again, no findings or significant deficiencies in internal control. Moving on to the high-level financial highlights. So presented on this slide are the governmental activities of the town and then the business-type activities of the town. So all of the funds are aggregated together in this presentation and then brought on the full accrual basis. So all of the capital assets are added here, all of the town's long-term debt are added here. So on a government-wide basis, I'll just focus on the governmental activities column. Really, nothing extraordinary happened from last year to this year. You could see that the balances are pretty consistent from '22 to '23. Maybe the only larger variances are in your liabilities. You did have a small bond issuance of about 2.6 million, but you also paid off bonds of about 3.5. And then some of your other longer-term liabilities did decrease, so leases and notes, and then your liability for other post-employment benefits that decreased too. So looking at the bottom of the page, net position of governmental activities increased slightly from 124 million to 125. So again, nothing really outstanding, which is not a bad thing, obviously. For business-type activities, that's your water and sewer funds. Again, same thing, really, the balances have really stayed consistent from last year to this year. Net position decreased slightly, 9.57 to 9.48. So really, nothing, again, nothing outstanding there. Looking at the funds of the town, so these are the major funds of the town of Tallinn. So your general fund, your emergency declaration fund, capital projects, and then all of the smaller, if you will, funds are aggregated together into the non-major governmental funds column. So I'm gonna look towards the bottom of the page for the results for the year. So the general funds, fund balance increased from the prior year 692,000. The emergency declaration fund, fund balance decreased 258,000. Capital projects fund balance increased seven, about 7.5 million from a negative 5.9 million to, to a positive 1.5 million. And that was due really mostly to the issuance of debt, which was that 2.6 million that I spoke about earlier. And in governmental accounting, when we issue debt, it's a revenue item. And then it looks like there was a large amount of government grants in that fund to add to the positive change in fund balance. And then the non-major governmental funds fund balance just decreased slightly, about 150,000 from last year to this year. So overall, the net change in fund balance from last year to this year for all your governmental funds was positive 7.766 million. And then just some more information on the general funds, fund balance. The total fund balance was 13.1 million. Of that amount, about a little over 1 million is committed for a couple of reasons, for education and then for stabilization purposes. 614,000 is assigned for encumbrances, and then 200,000 is set aside to balance the 2024 budget, leaving 11.3 million in unassigned fund balance. And then this is a snapshot of the general funds budget to actual. So this presentation shows the original budget as legally adopted in the first column. The second column is the final budget after any transfers or additional appropriations. That column is compared to the actual results, and then the last column is the variance column. So you could see that revenues came in about 1.177 more than was budgeted. Expenditures came in 267,000 less than budgeted. So you had, you know, positive on both ends. Investment income was significantly above budget, which I have seen in every one of my clients pretty much this year. So that's the big item, 571,000, and then it looks like the Board of Education was under budget 172,000. Just some more information I thought you might be interested in. Property tax collections this year were 98.87% collected compared to 99.10 in the prior year, so just down slightly from last year. And then your net OPEB liability, it's really not that big, 1.4 million compared to some of the amounts that I see. It's about 55% funded, and it did decrease from the prior year. Moving on to the federal and state single audit. For the federal single audit, the town spent a little over $3 million in federal awards. We tested the ARPA program as the major program, and as I stated before, we had a clean opinion on that program and no findings. For the state single audit, the town spent 18.6 million. We had two programs that we tested, the pilot program, which is payment in lieu of taxes in Town A Road, again, clean opinion on compliance and no findings. And as far as the governance communication, this is required communication from our firm to those charged with governance, which is the council. So I'm just summarizing the various things that were required to communicate. We did have a new standard that we adopted this year, which was GASP 96, subscription-based IT arrangements, otherwise known as Sabidas. The town did analyze, the town and the Board of Ed did analyze these arrangements, and they were immaterial, so we did not have to record any of this on the financial statement, so there was no impact. But the town's gonna have to look at these every year going forward to make sure, you know, that if they are material, they will have to be recorded. There are estimates in your financial statements, so we are required to analyze these a little more closely to make sure there's no management bias, that management is not trying to overestimate them or underestimate them so as to dictate, you know, the earnings of the town. So those estimates for Tallinn are the useful lives of capital assets, which is used to calculate depreciation expense. The net OPEB liability, which you utilize an actuary to calculate that for you based upon estimates made by management, and then the allowance for doubtful accounts, which And then the allowance for doubtful accounts, um, which you look at for receivables, which you look at the historical information. Um, so we deemed all of those estimates to be fairly stated. We did not have any disagreements with management. Management did not consult with other accountants for a second opinion on, you know, a way to account for something. We did not have any difficulties in performing the audit. There were no uncorrected misstatements and we are independent of the town. And then lastly, um, there's a couple of GASB standards next year and the year after. Uh, I don't think next year you're going to have anything to worry about. There's just some small, um, cleanup things in the omnibus standard. Um, just clarifying some previously issued standards. Um, Statement one hundred is accounting changes and error corrections. Just some more guidance on how to present those if that should occur, occur. And then in twenty-twenty-five, Statement one oh one is, uh, for compensated absences, which is again, just clarifying how that is reported. I don't think that's gonna have a really large effect on the town's financial statements. And then Statement one oh two is hot off the presses. Um, I think they issued it in December. Um, some more, how shall I say, um, ideas of certain risks that a town could have and, and how to disclose that. So we will address that as, as we get closer. So that is all I have. And I will stop sharing somehow. Could be at the top somewhere. Yeah. There, I got it.
Found it. Okay. Okay. Any questions for me? There are any, do you, uh, do you wanna start Lisa or?
Uh, no, I'm sure, yeah, it's up to you, whatever question you have. Does anybody have any questions?
I just have more of a comment. Uh, thank you, Lisa, for always doing, uh, what you do. And I know previous council, we heard about, I believe it was six hundred thousand dollars in investments that, or is that how much it came out to Katie?
It was close to six hundred thousand.
Between, yeah.
Fairly close.
So I think, you know, that's really good that the town was able to invest in, now would put it back into somewhere, uh, in different areas. So, um, and it was great that the Board of Ed, they didn't find any issues like they did last audit, which is big. So maybe with their new, they have a new accountant over there, right?
New, yeah, finance director. I'm not sure what his title is.
Yeah, so maybe he's really on top of it too. I don't have any particular questions. I know Katie has that sound, so.
Jen, Chris, Joe, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, I just, I have, I do have a few questions. I, I know we sent, uh, a number of questions via email and those should get included in the minutes packet, um, for disclosure. Um, I, I agree with Colleen in the gratitude. This is, obviously, there's, there's a lot here. Um, it's very clear, a lot of work goes into this. Um, and I'm sure we're just seeing the, knowing this is the final report. Uh, there's, I'm sure a lot of boxes in the background of additional paperwork. So thank you very much, uh, for always being on top of our budgets and, um, getting us this information on a yearly basis. Um, it is great to hear that we got a clean audit, um, on our entire town finances. I think that is always wonderful to hear. So again, thank you for those efforts. Um, I did have a, I have a couple of questions about unassigned fund balance. So, um, we have, if I, if I'm reading this right, at the end of fiscal year twenty-three, we closed the year out with an unassigned fund balance of about sixteen point seven nine percent of expenditures.
Pretty sure that's what it was, yes.
Yeah, you confirm. That, that's what's in your report.
Yeah.
Um, and a total fund balance of nineteen point five one percent of expenditures. And I just wanted to, again, clarify, uh, our current financial policy calls for, um, between ten and seventeen percent?
For total fund balance.
For total fund balance.
And we're nineteen for unassigned.
Yeah, and then I know the caveat on this and I, I, so thank you. I'm not, I'm gonna let you tell us the caveat.
The, the caveat, uh, in addition, that's just the base guideline.
Yeah.
Um, the rating agencies, uh, GFOA, all recommend that you have at least two months of operating expenditures as your fund balance.
Yeah.
That's certainly a lot more than what we have.
Yeah.
Um, so any amount that we exceed that seventeen percent or that fifteen percent, it only makes it better to reach that ultimate goal.
Sure.
But at least we're within a reasonable range with, with the policy that we have.
Yep, absolutely. Uh, I, I didn't ask this question ahead of time because I just thought of it. And if you don't know, that's okay, but, um, do you recall in your, uh, tenure here at Tallinn ever seeing our fund balance at this high a percentage of our expenditures?
Close, but not this high. And I know in, in my budget book, I have a historical analysis that shows the several years, but I don't have.
No, no, I, again, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but, but you always give us good information off the top of your head. So thank you, thank you for that. Um, I know, uh, that at the end of the, the fiscal year twenty-three, um, in November, maybe your October, September, I'm sorry, I forget which month, you presented to the council on the, um, the net increase that we were gonna make into fund balance at the end of the year. As, and the estimated, and it, it came out almost exactly what you estimated, uh, unsurprisingly, Lisa. Um, so I, just to clarify, we deposited, um, almost a million dollars into our unassigned fund balance at the end, a- after we closed out the books in fiscal year twenty-three?
That, yes, that's on a budgetary basis, as you do have budget and gap.
Yeah.
Uh, generally, except the county principals' gaps. Um, but yes, on a budgetary basis, it was a little over a million dollars and that's just about what I had estimated when I did the council update. Um, might've been in the November, October sometime.
Sometime around there.
It was before the council changed.
And, and just to, uh, highlight some of that, uh, five hundred and seventy-one thousand or over half of that was a unexpected, unbudgeted, uh, increase in our investment income. So that, that's money that didn't come from our taxpayers, right?
That is correct. And well, yes. The, the thing is, had we been aware during budget time that interest rates were going to skyrocket? Um, and we also changed some investment products, um, that are still safe, secure within our policy. Um, we had no inkling that interest rates were gonna go from less than point one percent to five percent.
Your crystal ball was broken.
It, we just had no, no idea. Um, Chris Jordan is also online this evening, he's my assistant.
Yeah.
And he's in charge of, you know, making sure all idle funds are invested to the max. And he's, believe me, there's times that I'm like, we need to have a little more cash in the account and he'll just sweep it all and, and play the game to, to make sure he can maximize on interest as much as possible.
Yeah, well.
So that's.
Your office did a great job, you and Chris did great. Thank you. Again, thank you for bringing in more than half a million dollars of unbudgeted, unexpected revenue from last year. Um, it feels a little bit like magic, so thank you for that.
When I do my update, the, again, we had increased the budget.
Yes.
In the new fiscal year.
Yes.
And with the advice of all of our advisors, that interest rates were going to start to fall. Well, we're still hearing out there in, in the, um, news that that is gonna eventually start happening, maybe in the spring, but it hasn't happened yet. So we're really, again, doing much better than we ever anticipated. So we may have a little bit, um, a lot of bit extra again this year, but I'll give you that update when I do the quarterly update.
Wonderful, wonderful. Well, you, anytime you wanna bring in unexpected revenue.
Yeah, I prefer to, I wish I knew about it ahead of time because then it would be less of an impact on other things.
Yeah, but nevertheless, I think we're all very grateful for that, so thank you.
And thank you to Chris too.
Yes, and thank you, Chris. Um, can you tell us what the balances for tax stabilization at the end of fiscal year twenty-three? Uh-oh, I asked.
Yeah, it, uh, it is in the audit book.
Okay, I can find it, but it's there.
It is.
Okay.
And, uh.
And as we go into budget season, those are the funds that would be potentially available for our consideration. Um, in you, in using for this upcoming budget.
Absolutely.
Okay, and, um, we are expecting, you're expecting to hear from Board of Ed to ask for, uh, their, uh, unspent dollars to go into their one percent fund?
Right, that was close to a hundred and seventy-three thousand. I think they turned back this year. So they will be, I think they already had a meeting on it. And once we, uh, regarding the ordinance, we have to wait until the audit is complete.
Sure.
And, uh.
But you're, we're expecting those funds to go there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be requesting you and hopefully you'll.
Awesome. Um, I think those are all of my questions. Again, thank you very much for answering the written questions that we had, which will be in our minutes. So if someone wants to see the types of questions we asked, please do. I think the, the big, the big picture here is we kept our financial house in order. We had no audit findings. Um, and it, it was a, it was a good fiscal year in terms of staying a little bit under budget and having more revenue than we expected.
And it's very good.
Yes, so thank you very much. Does anybody have any more questions?
Yeah, but Chris, so, um, sorry if I'm.
No, no, I'm done, thank you.
So were you going to also present on something or is this just special?
Well, I, what I do each year is I include a memorandum that kinda gives you some financial highlights. Um, normally I don't present on it, but it at least gives you an analysis more on a budgetary basis as to the detail of what happened, um, with revenues. It just kind of explains the revenue, explains the expense. But if there's something in there you'd like me to talk about, I'd be happy to. It's, it's up to you.
Okay, yeah, I didn't wanna preemptively ask questions, but, uh, my, my quick thing was based on Katie was talking about the, um, unassigned fund balance and trying to follow best practices by having a couple of months worth of expenses. Um, just for, for reference point, like, what pers, what is that in percentage turns? Do you know, Ken?
I, I don't have that number off the top of my head right now, but it's definitely probably over twenty percent for sure, maybe twenty-five percent.
Okay, just curious. Um, that was, uh, you know, I just echo Katie, you know, we've got the strong finance department here in Tallinn. And so it's been seeing a good, clean audit and everything pretty well funded. So thank you for all your work, thank you, uh, Chris for your work as well.
I'd also like to give kudos to the Board of Education because with their new person, uh, Haron, uh, I can't remember how to pronounce his last name, I apologize. But, um, really took over the helm and put a lot of procedures in place. Really great to work with, worked with the auditors and had a lot of, um, the financials in place without a lot of the issues this year. Actually, no issues that I'm aware of. Certainly the auditor would have said something.
Yeah. Wonderful. All right, well, thank you very much for all that information.
You're welcome.
Also Vanessa?
I think so, thank you Vanessa, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, have a great night.
Take care. Okay, so we are ready to move on to eight point two. The planning and development and building department direction.
All right, so, uh, as, as the new council members, uh, since they've gotten on board here, we try to get a, a different town department and for each town council meeting. Uh, tonight is planning and development, the building department, uh, and also Chris Spottler, um, from Eastern Highlands Health District, uh, so come on up. They're gonna give you an overview of, um, high levels.
Thank you.
Uh, who they are, what they do, uh, that I can tell you.
So, good evening. Madam Chair, members of the council, residents, guests. My name is Jim Paquelin, I'm the chief building official for the town of Tallinn. I started here in July of two thousand and fourteen. I was a self-employed building contractor and land developer prior to that. In my off time, I enjoy home improvement projects, which my wife always has a list. Motorcycle riding, vacationing in the Caribbean, and the best of all, throwing the tennis ball with my rescue ball. Our department works very closely with zoning and wetlands and health, and there's a lot of crossover between us. I manage a very front-facing department that most residents here have probably done business with at some point in the past. Without the cooperator of effort, David and his department staff, and my permit technician Laura Smith, who is not here this evening, we would not be as proficient and efficient as we are. My staff and I strive to provide the highest level of customer service that we can. And as you know, there's many rules and regulations that the building department enforces, but we always try to do it with courtesy and respect and professionalism. My goal is to try to educate the customer and explain why maybe something needs to be done a different way or they can't do it that way, or why they can't put their shed there. Make it educational rather than just approach it in punitive and problematic manner. I'm the project enforcement officer for the town. We handle most things informally, fortunately, which tends to work out quite well. Uh, my office receives and processes applications and provides staff support to the historic district commission. I also work very closely with CROG. I'm one of two building officials in the area to vet contractors for inclusion on the approved vendor list for crumbling foundation remediation. Uh, to do some other things with them. And I've done that since the inception of the captive insurance company, so quite some time. Last fiscal year, it's data that I had easily available. We issued one thousand six hundred and twenty-two building permits, conducted one thousand two hundred and ninety-nine inspections, issued permits for and inspected twenty-one new single-family homes, one hundred and fifty-three solar installs, twenty crumbling foundation replacements, and responded to seventeen emergency calls from the fire department, fifteen of which were after normal hours. I'm a licensed building official through the state of Connecticut and a certified building official through the International Co-Council, which is a higher and more rigorous national standard than the state of Connecticut requires. Maintaining those credentials requires over ninety hours of continuing yet every three-year cycle. My permit technician Laura is a Connecticut certified municipal official through CCM and is furthering her education as a permit tech and of the construction process in general with online training and occasional field trips with the building official. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'm sure David and Chris have some information for you.
Hey, so, uh, yeah, I'm David Corcoran, I'm the director of planning and development here. Uh, I've been with the town for about three years now. Uh, prior to that, I was a planner in, uh, Idaho and Montana for eight years before that, before deciding to move out to Connecticut. Uh, really enjoyed that decision, it's thus far from the best one I've, I've ever made. Um, our, our office, uh, oversees, uh, really eight different, uh, commissions and boards. Uh, the agriculture commission, the conservation commission, the design advisory board, the economic development commission, the planning and zoning commission, uh, the zoning board of appeals, the inland, wetlands and water courses commission, and the land acquisition advisory commission. So we, uh, we, we staff, uh, all, all of those. Um, additionally, we take care of, uh, permits for zoning, wetlands, variances, special permits, subdivisions. Um, uh, our office has a few people in it, uh, it's myself. Uh, we have Mike Tomato, who's a, a consultant, who serves as our, our wetlands agent. And the staff's the zoning board of appeals. Uh, then we have Sandra Santoro, who's our executive secretary. Uh, she lives in Tallinn, does a great job. Uh, she's, uh, working through her, uh, CASIO training and, 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 uh, and so i- is also a great resource to have in the office. Uh, you know, like Jim, I think we, we try to take a very friendly approach and, uh, make things as, as simple as possible. Um, but the help of the planning and zoning commission, we've been, uh, uh, working to really streamline a lot of. Um, but the help of the Planning and Zoning Commission, we've been, uh, uh, working to really streamline a lot of regulations over the last couple of years. Uh, you know, we've taken a look at basically every process we've got and, and if there's places where we're either requiring things that are unnecessary, or we're, uh, uh, just sort of throwing up, uh, uh, roadblocks where we're doing everything we can, uh, you know, encourage commercial development while, uh, you know, keeping Tallinn, Tallinn, and keeping it a nice place to be. So, uh, some of the major, uh, things we've done in the last couple of years, we've, uh, just finished redoing the technology campus zone, we've renamed it the, uh, Tallinn Commercial Zone, uh, and, and vastly opened up, uh, the land uses available there, if you're looking at the zoning map, that's the, the blue dot there on, on one ninety-five. Uh, we've also taken a, a good look at the Tallinn Village area and, and rewritten the regulations, uh, there with the idea of, of trying to, you know, encourage, uh, quality development in those areas. So, you know, our approach is, uh, if somebody calls with any sort of question, if it's something that, uh, isn't readily allowable, we, we get it in front of the commission as quickly as possible, uh, and, and oftentimes we can find ways to, you know, do whatever regulatory changes we need to, to, uh, allow, uh, whatever it is that's proposed. So, uh, in the last year, we've, we've made a few fairly large land use approvals, uh, Starbucks being one of them, uh, uh, the redevelopment of, uh, uh, the gas station there at, uh, Marrow and Goose. Uh, Tri-Town Gymnastics is looking to build a, a new facility out hard for turnpike. Obviously, the, the Santinis are under development, um, we've, uh, recently, I think you just finished, uh, issuing the building permits for our first, uh, recreational cannabis, uh, dispensary, uh, and, and, and then there's other developments that are, that are underway, that are under construction. So, uh, that's, that's kind of what we do in, in the planning office, so I'll show it to Chris to talk about the sanitaryian side of things.
Hi, council member, everyone here, uh, it's a pleasure to be here to finally meet everyone. This is my very first meeting, uh, I haven't met you for a space. I know I've walked, uh, well, met a couple of you in the corridor a couple of times, but I didn't really know you're part of the council, but, uh, it's good to be here finally. My name is Christopher Boote, I am a registered sanitarian. I, um, have an initial degree in, uh, public health, under Master's degree in public health as well. I work with, uh, Robert Miller, the Director of Health for the Eastern Highland Health District. So I'm basically an extension of Rob Miller over here in Tallinn. I am the Tallinn Town Sanitarian, and I've been able to, uh, uh, within the short time I've been here, almost six months now, um, taking over from Hollywood. Um, it's been a pleasure to work with the people of Tallinn, it's a new experience. Uh, it's a little bit different from what I've worked with before, but it's the familiarity makes it very, very special. So, uh, Tallinn has been a great place to work, and, uh, in the course of my duties of, um, I usually will advise people in terms of the best way to do things that will fall under the umbrella of, you know, promoting public health and keeping the environment safe, safe drinking water, safe, uh, uh, public water pools, camps, daycares and all of that. So apart from just doing all that to do an inspection and say so when passed or failed, uh, I usually approach it from an educational perspective, so we try to get a full-service establishment, uh, uh, try to get our, uh, septic installers, they do septic work here. Um, to look at it from the perspective that I, as a sanitarian for the town of Tallinn, I'm working for the residents of Tallinn to make sure that whatever they're doing at these job sites actually group code and is also helpful for the resident, you know, down the road. And of course, sometimes, uh, we'll make decisions that will best fit our situation in terms of keeping the public safe, maintaining the public, uh, the property value of where new systems, not via water treatment system or septic system is being installed, all well. So meeting code means making sure that your septic does not impact somebody's well downhill or your water treatment system is not discharging into something that could potentially contaminate either groundwater or someone else's drinking water and stuff like that. Uh, apart from that, we also do things, uh, advise you in terms of our garbage, uh, collection, garbage dumping. Uh, had to go out a couple of times, uh, to advise, um, to mediate mostly, to try to, uh, find a resolution. Uh, within this time I've been here, I'm happy to say so far I've not had to order anyone to issue a notice of, uh, violation to anybody in terms of orders to, to make sure that what they're doing doesn't impact their neighbor, they keep the environment safe. Uh, most times we've been, we've been able to talk through it and they're able to, like, they cooperate and we'll get it done. And, uh, um, it's been, it's been a pleasure, really. So, uh, mostly for the Eastern Highland Health District, most of our applications are online. So we try to walk people through, there are some people that can easily handle that process, and there are some that have some challenges, so those ones come in and we're able to collect those documents by hand and upload it into the system. We're trying to create a system whereby, uh, once, uh, down the road, we're gonna have like an online system whereby if anyone needs to access any document, even as we have it right now, you can just, from the comfort, the comfort of your own home, you can go online, access it and get printer, whatever it is that you need to print out, so it's easy, it's convenient and it's accessible. So, uh, I'm the sanitarian for the town of Tallinn and the town of Willington, and it's been a pleasure to meet all of you here today.
Thank you.
So I want to say that the, the, my office on a whole does a great job, and if you look at the, the audit there, you can actually see in there the revenue is up uh, in their office, um, and, and that's a great thing. It's changed radically over the last, I'd say fifteen years, just the attitude in the office, everyone is positive. Everyone is motivated and self, uh, educating themselves, it's just a great atmosphere. I have contractors, several friends in town, uh, that aren't the most kindest people in the world, and they tell me how great, you know, the office is there, uh, so it's, it's just refreshing to hear. Um, Chris and I have some overlap in the city of Hartford, uh, so he's, he comes here with a lot of experience. He's given me the good news and the bad news about my favorite restaurants in Hartford. Yes, uh, but he, he works for Eastern Highlands, and I want to say that Rob Miller, um, will be in here on his own to talk about, um, Eastern Highland Health District and what they do for the town in our coming meetings, that's all I have.
Do we have any questions?
I just was gonna say, I just learned a lot from you. But yeah, I agree with Brian, that we've got great staff, then it must be the boss that makes them so good.
Let Jacob go first, Chris, and then we'll get to you, thank you. Go ahead.
So again, um, great having all three of you here to learn more about, um, functions. Again, it's one of those things where you have an idea of what you all do, but you don't realize how, how vast it is. Um, I have a quick question for you, Chris, um, so what, what is, do you have like a territory? Are you strictly responsible for Tallinn, or are there more towns that you oversee? I'm curious how E H H D is structured that way.
Yeah, Eastern, the Eastern Highland Health District is comprised of ten towns right now. So right now, I'm primarily responsible for Tallinn and Willington.
Okay.
But I'm not totally locked in there, but they are my primary responsibility. So sometimes someone goes on vacation, there's a little need on the other towns, and, uh, or sometimes if I need an expertise or advice on what to do of certain situations, and whoever they're able to reach, that person takes the, of the issue.
Okay.
But yeah, but Tallinn, my office is mostly here in Tallinn. I go to Willington once in a while, uh, to keep my records updated there and to at least show, uh, interact with the people over there as well, but I'm mostly primarily here in Tallinn.
Okay, okay, interesting, thank you.
Chris?
Thanks, I just wanted to say, uh, Tallinn's very lucky to have all three of you, your professionals and, and your experience. Um, and being the liaison to planning and zoning, I just want to say, David and Planning and Zoning, uh, do a fantastic job of trying to work with residents or contractors or property owners trying to, uh, or business owners, I should say, trying to, uh, make the processes, um, seamless as possible and, uh, as accommodating as they can. So I just want to say that they do a fantastic job.
Thank you. Joe or Jen, did you have any questions?
I think we both have.
Go ahead, Jen.
I just want to echo, um, what everyone else said, we're very lucky to have, um, such great employees working here and dealing with the residents, um, and it's, it was truly one of the things that had attracted me to the town of Tallinn uh, was having experience going around to different, um, building departments and private practice and just, um, not always facing, uh, pleasant employees and, and, and feeling welcome in the building, and that was something that I always experienced coming into town hall in Tallinn. And, and, uh, so I really appreciate all the hard work you guys put in, and it, it really, um, it really makes an effect on people when they come in and, and deal with you.
Joe, did you want to jump in too? No, you're good, okay. Yeah, it's a lot of pressure. Um, I wanted to say thank you very much for everything you're doing. I had one quick question about Blight.
Sure.
Um, can you just, like, in a minute or two, tell us, uh, what, what happens if, say, a neighbor has a concern about how one of their neighbors is maintaining their property?
Sure, so there's, um, in, in the town code, there's, uh, regulations spelled out as to what would constitute Blight. Uh, the number one thing that a lot of people, um, fail to realize is that it has to be visible from the road, from the public way, not from their kitchen window, you know, looking at an angle through the trees when the leaves are down, you know, it's nothing like that. It's just we can see it from the road, we can't trespass and go stooping around. But, um, it, so if, if someone complains about Blight, they fill out a form, they send it to us, and then within a reasonable amount of time, usually, sometimes it's the same day, sometimes it's a couple of days later, we go out, we take a look, we take some pictures to document it, I do my inspection, I fill out a report and state my findings. On, sometimes there's, there's nothing, it's just neighbors arguing and, you know, it is what it is, so, you know, that's fine. We close that out and let them know, you know, it's just nothing to do with us. Um, if there is a bona fide concern, uh, maybe, gosh, I don't know, maybe an accumulation of junk in the front yard and some old rusty cars and, you know, just stuff that is not typical of a single-family home. The first thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna try to call them. We usually have their phone up or we can get it through different sources or an email from a building permit. You know, we'll just reach out to them and say, hey, look, you know, we received a complaint, could I talk to you about it? Quite often I'll meet them out there and, you know, look, you know, this, this doesn't work, can you please clean this up? You know, can you move to the backyard, do you need help with something? Your law, your lawnmower broke, great, maybe we can, you know, try to set you up with the Beps Department or the Human Services. So nine times out of ten, we can solve it informally like that. If we have to, I'll send them a notice violation for a bona fide complaint if I can't work with them, and that gives them sixty days to remedy the situation, or at least provide a reasonable timeline that will be acceptable to myself and the commission. Um, if, if they do that, they start cleaning it up, great, problem goes away. If for some reason they just dig their heels and then say, no, this is my property, I'm gonna keep it messy and too darn bad, well, then after sixty days, we can actually give them a fine, and that fine is, um, one hundred dollars a day for the first thirty days and ten dollars a day afterwards until it reaches four thousand, and then it gets turned over to the tax collector, and they deal with it like they would any other tax lien.
Has, has anyone gotten to fines?
We, so, um, yes, um, when we first started Blight, there was one property that, um, we didn't have that cap on the limit, and these guys just dug their heels in, and Attorney Conti's office was involved heavily, had a marshal involved, and the fines went up quite steep, they really did. Um, ultimately, a negotiation was made after the cleanup, and they covered our legal fees and, uh, paid a little extra penance and, and that was fine. And there was one other time when it was a car that was just there forever and it, interesting story, I won't bother you with the details, but it was his, uh, his ex-wife's house who passed away and he had inherited it, and he didn't want to live there anymore, but he just paid the taxes on it. Um, so, um, we, we worked with him and he ended up, you know, paying a, a small fine and got the car towed away by bills, and that was that. Um, everyone else, to the best of my recollection, it, it's just been informal. And, uh, you know, clean up the stuff, please, make my phone stop ringing, you know, make your neighbors happy. And, and, and after a month or so, most people have just complied, which is great.
Thank you, I know, um, sort of anecdotally, yeah, there's a lot of positive, um, there's a lot of positive feedback on how our Blight ordinance is being in, enforced, and that's, that's just you. So, it's all you, and so you get all the responsibility for, uh, the anecdotal good, uh, goodwill, so thank you very much for that. Um, I personally am very happy with your approach, um, and I think a lot of, I think it's a really great way for us to extend customer service and really foster, um, positive neighborhood environment. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any questions for these? No, no, you guys don't have anything on the capital budget, right? We don't get to, you, you're off the hook, you're off the hook for the capital budget, so, um, we, we will probably see you again then for a regular budget, but, uh, thank you for all the work that you're doing. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for bringing those fine people in to meet us, it's great to look faces in front of us. And, um, and then we're going to move on now to item eight point three to our state, uh, delegation. Uh, I'd like to start by thanking you guys for sticking around, uh, much appreciated. I, if, if you were the only ones here, you would have been first, um, but, uh, anyway, thank, thank you for coming in before session starts, and Brian, do you have an introduction?
Well, uh, yes, but thank you for coming, and there's some new council members all here and, um, uh, virtually as well, so we wanted to get you in front of that, of all the towns, and that's all I really have, it's great to see all of you.
Well, happy to be here, I just want to say, this is actually, having to wait an hour is not a problem. When I used to chair Planning and Zoning in my town, I would be at town hall for like eleven at night, so this is early.
I just gotta say, it's a little weird being over here.
Next to me or just?
Well, there's that, you know.
Now you get a foot over there and then can, you wouldn't go, yeah.
Yeah.
Please introduce yourself so we, we know who you are and.
Sure, I'm Jeff Gordon, I'm the state senator, uh, Tallinn, I'm proud to represent along with twelve other towns in the thirty-fifth, uh, district. Uh, I'm a freshman, so I finished one year, and as my wife said, I survived it. So, and before that, I served for fifteen years as Chair of Woodstock's Planning and Zoning. So I know what it is to be a town official, so thank you for the work you do, uh, that is appreciated. And just so you know, the committees I serve on, I'm on public health, I'm a doctor, I'm a blood and cancer specialist, so being on public health is natural for me. I'm also on appropriations, and I'm on public safety, and I'm the ranking Senate Member of Veterans and Military Affairs, as well as a number of different parliaments and things like that.
I am Tanya Nuccio, for those of you who don't know me, I'm the state rep for the fifty-third, so that covers, uh, Tallinn, uh, Willington and, uh, East of Vernon. Um, I was on the town council for six years, so like I said, it's a little weird being on the side of the, the table here, but, um, I appreciate it, I know everything you guys do all the time, thank you for volunteering and doing the, all the crazy hours and stuff that you have to do. I am ranking Member of Appropriations, um, I am also on the Insurance Committee. I'm also on Executive Nominations, and I am on several, uh, of governor-appointed boards, including the Domestic Violence Forum, the Jet Tube, um, forum, workforce forums, um, a bunch of different task forces and such, um, and, I think that's pretty much, that was my second term. So, not a freshman anymore.
And Tim Acker.
The Dean of the.
Yeah, and, uh, this is actually, I'm entering my fourteenth session, uh, so coming up in this term here. So seven terms, uh, probably been sitting here many, many years, uh, in front of, uh, this great group. Uh, Deputy Leader, uh, on the Republican side, I serve on General Law.
My mentor.
Yeah, and, and she's hard to mentor.
No.
I had to mentor Sam Belcino, you can see how well I did with that. So, uh, uh, ranking, uh, Member on the Labor Committee, um, and I serve on Energy and Technology. Uh, and honored to be, uh, serving Tallinn again, I also serve, uh, the whole town of Coventry, the whole town of Columbia, half of both and half of Lebanon. Takes about forty minutes to get from one portion, I feel like a senator. The, the, the lower portion of Lebanon, so, but, uh, it's an honor to serve Tallinn.
Wonderful, well, thank you very much for coming, and does anybody have any? Wonderful. Well, thank you very much for coming. Does anybody have any questions? Yeah, Jacob, go.
Thank you. So um, I guess less, less questions and a couple, you know, priorities, I guess. Thank you. Ben, Board of Ed, obviously sounds familiar. I, I think that one thing I'll carry over from the Board of Ed is still a concern is unfunded mandates, which regardless whether they're school or town-based, they definitely um, affect us, especially from a budgetary and staff perspective. Um, so definitely want to make sure that there are mandates uh, that are necessary that we are getting some support for that. Um, another big issue um, I want to talk about is, is as far as criminal justice reform. You know, Tallent has had, you know, a large number of car break-ins. Um, you know, we try to do what we can at the local level and partner with our, our local police here. Um, you know, I think though that I would like to see some, some work up into some of the recent reforms that have been passed to see if there's some things that we can do to uh, increase the penalties uh, for uh, for those, for those sorts of crimes. You know, there's only so much you can do um, at the local level. So that's definitely a big priority for me. And then I guess the last thing, just kind of a question, um, as we enter the session, like what are um, some things that you see on the horizon that, that we as a town should be concerned about? Maybe it's a good thing, but um, just, just some things that we should have in mind.
Yeah. Uh, so to a couple of things, so unfunded mandates, I mean, for, for many, for many reasons, you know, we've reached out over and over to try to get like the low hanging fruit from our superintendents. And sometimes it's hard to get that, uh, you know, what can we do? Where, where can we do? I know some areas that uh, we mandated since I've been in office, um, is uh, deals with budgetary. So e- equal budgets across, so when the departments, the State Department of Education looks at their budgets, it's, it's, you know, it's, there's, you know, thirty bullet points or something that are supposed to be very, you know, equal to look at. Um, that was a mandate that came down and I think that most communities or all communities, uh, you know, adhere to those. And it kind of took a look at how each town spent their money, you know, uh, you know, was there any egregious spending in certain areas? So I know that that was something that came down, but I didn't think there was any negative side on the, on the uh, uh, from superintendents. We also, the reading curriculum, I'm always interested in that mandate that came down about reading curriculum. And I haven't got a chance to meet with the Board of Ed and I'm sure that we'll probably have that meeting at some point. Uh, how they're dealing with the reading curriculum. I know a lot of people put in uh, that had already invested in reading curriculum. And then the state mandated a certain very, you know, uh, very limited amount. And and most towns are doing a very good job in, in, in those areas. And I, I think that the blanket way that they held, they dealt with the reading curriculum was, was poorly done. Uh, many towns, many of my communities are putting in, uh, you know, asking for the waiver. Uh, and so uh, so that's an area that we're working on for the, for that area. And that's very expensive to have to change a reading curriculum that's already implemented and is working very well. I don't think, I think Tallent does very, very well in terms of that area. I had one other, but I, uh, it slipped my mind, I started to come up the uh, reading curriculum. So uh, I think we're always looking at where, if you can identify at all, an area that we can help to alleviate things that and it's just not money. It's, it's, because money is also time spent.
Yeah.
You know, so taking it, you know, taking a person out of the classroom that needs to be in classroom or paraprofessional away from the job that they're doing, those are also mandates that need to be, that need to be looked at. So if there's a way that you can find anything that we can help with, you know, whether it's on the town side or on the Board of Ed side, then I think we're always open to that.
I have a list I'll share. I think I sent it to Tammy a couple of years ago. Um, I can definitely send it out. I can send the rest of the council as well.
Always.
Was three hundred and eighty-four before and it's more now. But in regard to that though, Jacob, I know you've worked on that list. And we did get legislation passed, I want to say it was last year, where they are um, actually putting a work group together. Um, I've been screaming about it since I've been up there about the mandates. And we finally got legislation introduced where there's a work group that's gonna look at those mandates. Um, it's kind of like I've been telling the Board of Ed here every year, the last seven years, you know, tell me the top ten. What are the top ten that are the most egregious that we need to look at? And then I'll talk to other superintendents and stuff like that. We'll see like how is this impacting everybody and bring it forward. So now there is this work group that is supposed to be reviewing that. And there's other organizations on there, CEA is on there, CCM, I think is on there. Um, the, the superintendent's uh, people are on there also. Caps, like there's a bunch of organizations that are supposed to be looking at those mandates and removing them. And also um, whenever there's a piece of legislation that comes up that's education, education related, I text and email all of our superintendents. Um, all three of, I have three, so four, if I, I have four actually, because I do send it also to E O Smith, because I have a lot of kids in Wellington that go to E O Smith. And I will send them the legislation and I will text them if it's late at night and say, whatever, like how does this affect us? Um, and that always helps me make my decision too, because they're gonna be looking at the balance of the kids and also the mandate. But um, we have to keep up with the superintendents and make sure the boards of ed know what's coming and the superintendents know what's coming too. So the mandates is hopefully within, I think that group has to meet for almost a year before they get back to us to tell us. And then at that point, maybe we can start removing some.
That's great to hear that.
Yeah.
It's only for three years.
Most agencies have no idea about their list of unfunded mandates. Department of Education is like a prime example of that. You ask them and I have many times, why do they require this? What do they do with these reports? And you, you get nothing. You just get the same general reply, even when I've spoken with the commissioner about why they want it all. And one of the bad things about unfunded mandates is sometimes they'll show up in other bills. So like you don't want to vote against the budget because maybe there's really good things in there. And then suddenly somewhere in page like eight hundred, there's some extraneous unfunded mandate. So I, I, I'm a firm believer that the state feels it's a policy decision, the state should pony up the money and pay for it. It doesn't for a lot of that stuff. Uh, but that's one of the problems with these unfunded mandates. They don't always show up in a bill that you think is, you know, relevant to them.
It's not always in education though.
Not.
Can be thrown in something and you, and you don't know it.
Because there are these bills that come out and they have a title that say, you know, address and there's tons and tons of other things in it.
Yeah. It's like tactical government, like ten thousand.
That happens. And so you can't always remove it. But then on the other hand, like for the budget, for example, were there things in the budget I didn't like? And there were some unfunded mandates in it, but in the scheme of things, there were some good things in the budget I was advocating for. So sometimes it's difficult to get rid of these. Doesn't mean we can't keep pushing. Be interesting with the task force. Really comes up with, I think, it's a good way to shine light on just the staggering number of them and are they still even relevant anymore? I bet you most of them are no longer relevant and can be removed.
Some of them hopefully, but there are two things that the town really should be aware of. Um, Tim mentioned one and that was the right to read program. If I look at Vernon, Vernon had a very successful reading program that over the last like seven years, or whatever years they've been putting it in, they've consistently shown growth in increased better scores. They actually review all their kids' scores all the time and that. And they were looking at the reading piece and they were growing, they were doing better. And the state refused their waiver. So they want them to change their entire reading program, to go to the state reading program that doesn't have the same results as the result of the ones that they're putting in. So we are looking at trying to find a way to modify the right to read legislation, um, where if you can prove your reading program is doing like what it needs to be doing, then you should be able to get an exemption from that. And the way to do it is by looking at the test scores. The other thing though, and I did send an email to Brian and I think maybe Bruce on this one, there was legislation that was passed that changes uh, the age now for incoming kindergartners. All kindergartners right now have to be five years old by September first. I know my daughter, uh, my oldest, she was a September fourteenth baby. She started when she was two weeks short of five years old. She wouldn't be able to do that now, this year. You have to be five unless you can get an exemption. And all the towns are kind of struggling now with, okay, so how do we determine the exemption? It's supposed to be at the principal level, you know, but there's no like set anything in there. And that's gonna cause a, a big problem because there are about nine thousand kids now in the state of Connecticut. I'm not sure what the number is in Tallent or Wellington or Vernon total. Yeah, I've asked for it, but I haven't gotten it. But nine thousand kids in total who had all planned to be starting kindergarten. And you know, just a month ago, found out that they can't start kindergarten. So putting a lot of pressure on the daycares and it's putting a lot of pressure on preschool environments. Um, and I mentioned that might be an opportunity for the town, you know, Tallent Tykes. I'm a huge advocate of Tallent Tykes, best preschool program in the town, as far as I'm concerned, it's run over here in the rec department. It's affordable. Um, if they could expand, hire somebody and do a five-year-old program, I guarantee you it would probably fill up. Because you've got a bunch of kids now who are not gonna be able to go to school when their parents had planned for them to be going to school. Um, so it would be a good opportunity for the town to look into to help the residents. Um, and so, you know, help the kids, because these kids have been priming to go to kindergarten. You know, like they've been in preschools or whatever, they're priming and now they, they have a year to sit idle. So it's putting a lot of pressure on the three and four-year-old existing programs, because all those four-year-olds that you thought were gonna go, and they ain't, they ain't got nowhere going now. So um, that's something that I think would be good for you guys maybe to look into. How do you, can you, do you have enough time? Can you create that kind of program? Can that, you know, because that'd be probably a good asset for the residents in town.
That's interesting. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah.
Just a cou- a couple of other items just to be aware of, um, housing is still a big issue. Our housing committee and planning and development committee and uh, those are issues I know very well, having done it in my town for many, many years. Uh, those are gonna continue to be issues. A, a lot of them are gonna be likely more mandates. Um, and one has to be careful about how the state might do a top-down approach. There's been a lot of fighting in the last session about some of this, about what's the right approach. Uh, but there, there is gonna continue to be movement uh, coming out of, especially the housing committee. The governor has listed it as a, uh, one of his top items. I've had discussions with them about this topic. Um, and so stay tuned, that's something certainly will be having, or already have been having discussions with various planning and zoning commissions in my district. Some of them may well have impacts as well on uh, the density of housing and uh, what you might have to do relative to that or any infrastructure needs that the town might be liable for, which could be in addition, another unfunded mandate potentially. So watch that because that's gonna, that's still a hot button issue uh, on the housing committee. And another one is gonna be relative to public safety. I serve on that committee and we're continuing to have discussions about how do we support our fire departments, EMS. Uh, police, especially in my district where most of my towns just rely upon uh, state police coming out of troop C or troop D depending upon which town you're in. And there's gonna be more of those discussions coming out of public safety relative to what more can we do realistically to be of help recruiting and retaining. Uh, some of that has to get into what the state can and cannot afford for uh, money, especially staying within spending caps. Um, so that's gonna, public safety is gonna be, gonna have another active series of discussions and seeing what more can and cannot be uh, done. But we talk about public safety, I have been a big advocate for, we really need to make certain we're giving the police the tools they need uh, and to do what they're trained to do, to keep us safe, but also needing to make certain that whatever laws are passed in the legislature are really trying to keep criminals, especially those who are committing very serious or those repeat offenders, keep them accountable. And those are major, major issues. So I expect that judiciary committee is gonna be busy again uh, based upon how busy they were last session on a number of items.
And me, going to housing, part of housing is, you know, I, you know, the definition of, of what is affordable housing. I mean, there is, if you look at, you know, not, not everything is a twenty-five hundred square foot and a larger, you know, uh, home. I mean, we have a, you know, a good amount, but you also have a lot more affordable which are already existing in Tallent. You know, so I think that's an area that will be definition, how we classify what affordable housing actually is. And then I got a question. Uh, I, I know Coventry struggles with their uh, EMS services in terms of, you know, balancing that um, income coming in and paying for their, for their services. And they're trying to get creative. Uh, how is Tallent handling their EMS um, ambulance services and things like that? How are you guys doing with that?
So I, better than Coventry, I know they do struggle with it, but we, we're fortunate to have um, a, a good relationship with Yukon.
Okay.
We would be in a much different circumstance if we weren't funneling in uh, staff uh, from Yukon.
Okay.
That being said, I've met um, with members, uh, with, with people in Coventry about, you know, all of our goals is to one day go to a regional ambulance. Uh, and in, in discussions with Lisa in Thomas and in Coventry, we've had very cursory talks about it. Obviously Matt Reed in Ellington wants to do the same thing.
Okay.
Uh, EMS seems the easiest logistical move to regionalize first. When you look at fire and police,
Yeah.
Um, that, that seems like that would be the easiest in Coventry that they hire their services out right now.
Right.
Uh, and it hasn't been a resounding success from what I hear. Um, and it's expensive, so um, we would keep them in any talks if we did uh, do that.
Thank you.
We, you know, everyone wants to regionalize.
I think that's kind of the thing, is how do we better serve those individuals that need that support, that need that ambulance call, that need that, you know. So um, I think that's an area that we'll be addressing also. It's gonna come back up again at the legislature, let's say, but so, thank you.
And then one other quick thing that I just made from a public health point of view, but we're continuing to do what we can do, trying to deal with the issues of community hospitals. Uh, Tammy and I can attest to the fight that we've been having up at Wood Johnson Memorial in Stafford to make certain they're not getting rid of their inpatient labor delivery. And so far, we've been successful. On the other hand, I applaud them for expanding a lot of needed outpatient services at their really brand-new buildings that they've been rolling out in uh, in the Enfield area. But we also have the uh, the issue with ECHN, Rockville Hospital, Manchester. That's a mess because of the private equity firm that bought them out, which at the time, quote unquote, saved them. But then so very creative ways took money out, including selling the land. And now then there's a lease that has to be paid. It's a, but, but they, they make money. So uh, and I can tell you that the, one of the chairs of the public health is a doctor, so he's only two of us doctors. So we align on a lot of some of this stuff, uh, as far as what we can do to better help some of the community hospitals. At the end of the day, Rockville and that system is trying to rely upon the state finally, hopefully at some point, giving approval for Yale to buy them out. But that's a separate fight with bureaucracy, uh, that I've had discussions with the governor about. Uh, but we are looking to see what we can do to try to really help preserve for the community hospitals uh, that serve our towns. And I have four that serve my district. Um, what can we do to help them, but also make certain that we're holding their feet to the fire? So when the big entities buy them out, what they really want to do is turn the community hospitals into outpatient centers, because quite frankly, that's the money. Inpatient loses money, but you need inpatient services, you need emergency rooms. Um, so try to really hold their feet up to the fire. So I think you're starting to see some of that, you know, move just because of just the sheer bulk of consolidation that's happened in this uh, state, where we're not a big state, uh, with really two big players, Hartford Healthcare and Yale. Um, just the territory they own. Um, so you're starting to see some change in state government realizing you need to make certain we're looking out for all the towns, just not the cities where the big hospitals are located.
So I would just kind of, to get to your last thing and to wrap up on that with Johnson. So far, I've literally been fighting that fight since the day I got elected, before I got elected. Yeah, and closing of maternity there has been a big issue, right? And they have not had maternity services since COVID. Oh, we just did come out with a preliminary ruling, denied that, that CON. So now the work becomes uh, pressuring Johnson and Trinity, uh, you know, St. Francis Hospital to actually invest in their maternity, um, and bring that ward open again and make it like a, a destination place for women in our area to be able to go there and, and have babies. Because right now it's Manchester or Hartford and that's it. So being able to do that will bring back services to our community which are very well needed. But in regard to what's on the horizon, um, the biggest concern that I have right now, uh, this is a s- short session. We're not supposed to have a lot of legislation. We're not supposed to have anything that does not relate to the budget. But that it doesn't, in my whole grand experience of three years, it hasn't been the case. But um, my concern right now from budgetary perspective is we put a hundred and fifty million dollars into the budget for education expenses. And the very best thing that we can do for the towns is handle um, cover more of the education expenses. Education, as you all know, or you all will know very soon, is, you know, anywhere, depending on the town, between seventy and eighty percent of any town budget. It is the largest piece of the budget. Um, and it's always been a goal of mine to get the state of Connecticut to step up and actually pay for uh, the, a bigger piece of that education. Uh, by the time the ECS formula that was passed in twenty seventeen is done, Tallent will be getting about two thousand dollars per kid from the state of Connecticut for ECS. I don't find that acceptable. Um, we have managed to get that frozen since I've been in legislature. I've had many conversations with Matt Ritter and Jason Rojas and, you know, anybody who would listen about ECS formula. You know, anybody who would listen about ECS formula and, um, Talon was losing the most amount of money. Any town in the state of Connecticut at three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year. We've managed to have that, get that frozen. So in the entire time that I've been there, we have not had those cuts. So that's one point three million dollars that the town of Talon. Um, has not had to increase taxes, but which is huge. My goal is ultimately with these guys' help and everybody else's help. To get them to reevaluate the ECS formula. The more money I can get. For Talon or Wellington or Vernon or any of my towns to cover education expense, it alleviates the pressure on the towns. So there's a lot of concern right now, cause that hundred and fifty million dollars, it's in the budget. It's just earmarked for education improvements and those dollars would help Talon because the second part of what they were doing, they were looking to accelerate the ECS formula. But they're also looking at changing the funding for charters and, um, charters and magnet schools. So where the town of Talon pays right now for kids to go to some of these schools, that would not be the case anymore. The state would be paying for that. That would alleviate the pressure on the, the br- the bill, the budget and the pressure on the taxes for the residents. So. Um, I'm pretty, they told the governor, told anybody who would listen that I'm pretty fiercely, um, protective of that hundred and fifty million dollars. There's been some talks about it being taken and used for other things, but, um. I won't let that happen. We won't let that happen without a good kicking and screaming fit.
Trying to really do more for public education has been one of my priorities and I'm glad. That despite the governor's initial budget, we were able to hold towns harmless, which were, those were gonna be scheduled cuts. And so things were changed and so that was money that had to be found, but rightly so. And I agree, the more we can do and. Repurpose some of what state government does to fund its core responsibilities, of which public education is one of the high ones. I know in my town, I think it's at least eighty-five percent of our budget is, um, uh, for education. But we don't have a lot of town services, so we were able to do that. Um, but there is gonna be a fight. Everybody either wants to break into the, the surpluses or go beyond the spending cap, which. The governor is adamant that he doesn't want to do, and I agree, we have spending caps for good financial reasons. But also trying to find ways of what to do with, you know, the money, you know, everybody wants money. And so I agree that we don't wanna be taking away from what has already been achieved, because you take it away, the towns have to make that up and that's just property taxes. You know, we move that forward. So it'll be very interesting. I've had a lot of discussions last year and so far this month with members of the education committee. To see kind of what are some of the thoughts emanating from them. But it'll be very interesting to see what happens, you know, with regards to. Everybody's wishes to spend on various things, but, um, I think we're pretty close right at the spending cap already. We're actually, we're over.
Potentially to be fifty million dollars.
Yeah, over based upon latest data that's come out and so. How do we handle that? Don't wanna take it away from public education. I would really like to do more and more, you know, that we can, so we'll see. But. So stay tuned for, uh, to see the fight over the money, uh, in what we have. Should be interesting appropriations, could be. Very long meetings. Uh, I can, uh, I can tell you that.
I just have a question. Hold on one second. Are you, are you all set?
Um, I am. Oh. But I sparked a good conversation. I definitely appreciate everything, but I'll definitely.
Sure. Chris, go ahead.
Thanks and thank all three of you for coming in tonight. I appreciate you taking the time out. Uh, I just have a question regarding contaminated wells. I know Tammy's worked on this a lot with Katie and this Rose salt task force, but, um. We obviously have a pretty serious problem in town with people having, not having potable water in their houses. I'm just sort of wondering why the state hasn't done more or what, um, our delegation could do to maybe work with other towns that might have other issues. Um, you know, maybe approach sort of similar to crumbling foundations and what, what we can do, uh, at a state level to address that.
So, um, great question and it is definitely something that I've been working on since, um, since I was elected. And it is something that we're seeing as a growing issue in the state. We're starting to see it in other areas. Um, for a long time, unfortunately Talon held the prestige of having the most amount of contaminated wells and so it's. Unfortunate because it's like a new topic for people up there. So we've been having the conversations, the state. It's a little difficult because they're, depending on which area you're talking to, they're pretty hands-off with it. Because as far as they're concerned, they only do the state roads and whatever this towns are doing are the towns' issues, but the state dictates what the towns have to do. With no sense of responsibility for that. Um, and the two thousand and seven report that the state. Released and used to justify, um, going to salt on the roads. Has been proven to be woefully wrong, woefully incorrect. It did not take into account. The geology, the land masses of the areas like us that are more rocky, that don't have a lot of loom, that don't have a lot of, um. Filtering sources. So it's, it's a constant battle in conversations that I'm having with people. Um, I have worked with Jamie Foster on the fifty-seventh, Tim has been part of it too, um, Jeff also, but we have worked. Uh, Ellington has some issues, East Windsor has some issues, and because we're all kind of like in the same area, we can lump our numbers together. I have put in, and Jamie, between the two of us, I think we have probably put in six or seven different pieces of legislation. Um, to get the state to take more responsibility for it and it, we can't get it over the threshold yet. We're still working on it. The work that we're continuing to do here with the road salt task force, you know. Katie and I before I left and now, you know, now I'm still participating wherever I'm being. Invited to, I guess, at this point, you know, um, you know, we're putting a lot of pressure on D, on DOT. On all of these places, uh, to say, you know, h- how can you help us with this? It's definitely an area where we need more focus, more allies. Um, I actually, I, I mentioned it to the governor and he's like, what's going on in Talon? You have crumbling foundations and you have contaminated wells. And I'm like, that's your doing, dude. I'm like, that's the state of Connecticut. Like, we went to salt, like, help me out with it, so. Um, I had almost got him to commit. He had said he would commit to coming out and visiting some homes, but it didn't happen over the summer, so. I'm trying to get him out here to see the issue and to understand what the residents are facing. Uh, but we just have to keep working together. And I totally value the relationship that we have here with the town council to keep. Us all at the table, because we're gonna need all the voices moving forward to raise this up. So you have to remember, the majority of this state doesn't have wells. They have public water, so they don't care. Like when, and the water, i- it's gotten pretty bad because we also actually applied to the, um, water grant. And because of some social value index that they were putting on all of the projects, there was not a. Snowball's chance in how that talent was ever going to qualify for any of these grant dollars. Because of this social, um, this social value index, um, in the way talent is perceived as a town. What we need people to get through their heads is that this is not, it, it is not economically driven, it is not demographically driven. It is portable water and it is just. We are our own worst enemy with our own use of salt and what we're doing. So. Still working on it, still pushing, not gonna stop. And I value any, any relationship that we have here. To continue to push this forward because Talon is a leader, unfortunately, in this area and we have to continue to be.
Yeah, thank you. And I see. Oh, sorry, go on.
Just one quick thing, as you mentioned crumbling foundations, that, that we're continuing to push and I served executive on their board as a senator. And, uh, continuing to push, there was actually successfully, uh, an e- an effort to take some money away from it. Before it actually gets into that fund, to help fund some other parts of the state. Um, and so one needs to be careful about that continuing to happen. Cause you can actually start limiting the money that goes into helping crumbling foundations here. I fought against it when it was a surprise bill that came out. Uh, but also we're really pushing to make certain the state in a timely manner is giving the money. That the crumbling foundation, um, insurance needs. And there's been some delays and it almost created some serious issues. With them having to put a pause on certain things. So that's also a behind-the-scenes effort to continue to push up the money that is supposed to go to that fund. Is going when it's supposed to, to continue to help people. It's a very well-run, uh, program. Just need to make certain the state continues to, to put the money in that the state says it's gonna put in, uh, at the time the, the state's supposed to put it in.
Actually, I, I wanna say one other thing though, Chris. That social value index, um, was actually found that they can't do that, right? That was part of the problem. Uh, the federal government came back and said, you can't limit these funds like that. It's not allowed by the federal programming. So they had to kind of re-tweak it and go through the whole process again and we're still waiting to even hear on that. So. That's good news for us if they don't have that, but I just wanted to bring up the point that they did, we're told that they cannot do that. It wasn't fair and just.
Okay, yeah, so I just think, I'm, I think it's a good thing that we're having our public hearing on Thursday, I think. Moving towards like solution, right? Like, you know, it's, it's gotta be unbearable having non-potable water. So I think whatever we can do to elevate that to the state level to express that, I think, um, it's hard to, uh, disagree with. You know, not having potable water being a critical issue in a, you know, in Connecticut, that's, um, I think unacceptable. So whatever we can do to keep, um. Pushing that forward, I think is really, really important. Thank you.
I can promise you we will and I think you'll see on Thursday, um, you know, again, working, Katie and I working with the state, you know. One of the options that are gonna be coming out once we get enough data and that is hopefully going to be state-funded, right? It's, it's not a total solution to everything, but it is something that we are pushing to try to help these, these residents. And, you know, I don't know, you know, Katie and me very well, but if you put both of us in a room with one main goal. I, I, I don't know that anybody's gonna leave that, that don't, you know, we, we tend to kind of get our way, so. You know, we, we, it, it's been a good, uh, it, it's been good, both of us being able to sit there and kind of back everybody into a corner and say, help us fix this.
Yeah, we're lucky to have you and Katie on this, so thanks.
Thanks, Chris. And I know we're gonna go, Kelly, but I wanna, I wanna get out of your time.
Very quickly, just for you three, just so we can maybe just narrow the scope for the general public. Uh, for people that, like Sean, they're here, that have a very specific, um, view of what's going on, if not the state and the town. Is this, do we have an answer to why specifically? Is this the, the unique topography of Talon? Is this the salt? Is it a combination? Do we have like a, a specific roadmap here for this? Well, I think the example in Talon is similar to the example. We have a certain small area in Coventry, similar. Um, that they're dealt with the storage of their salt. It seems to be, um, you could probably be wrong, but the application of salt in Talon. It seemed to be as to, as to, uh, what Tammy, uh, had mentioned earlier about, you know, this, this, the, the, the way that. We treated roads in the past, obviously, and the amount, um, and what, how much, if you remember the salt. Facilities that we had here and then where it ended up, uh, and, and the goal to have safe roads, you know, when we could, you get the icy roads and. There's no, and, and then it comes down to, it just can't drain, right? You got the, whether it's, uh. Slate or wherever the ground is that is, you know, uh, you know, stone. It finds the weakest place for it to go. It can't, so it rides, it goes right to the wall. So that's the understanding that I have of what's taking place. Like it can't dissipate into the, the, a soil, cause there's not, the soils aren't there. And they find that avenue to go into the, into the, uh, ground, the, um, you know, that flotation into your water system and stays there. Until it can be, it would probably take decades to actually have it filtered out.
It's, it's so layered, right? So the two thousand and seven report that was released from the state of Connecticut in Yukon. Went off of opinion that, you know, public opinion was I want to be able to drive in the roads in the winter, like I drive on the roads in the summer. I want black roads. Um, the research that they did, uh, was not geographically wide enough. Um, the assumptions were that you could apply all this salt to the road and that it would. Filter through layers and layers of gravel and dirt and stone before it got anywhere near the water line, right? Um, that has proven to be extremely erroneous, right? That's not the case everywhere. Uh, and actually even in places where they thought it was the case, they're seeing that that's not the case. The salt builds up. It doesn't go away, right? Like it's, it's one of those things in the world that, you know, it comes back, look at the ocean and everything. So it's not, it's not doing what they thought it would do. That's part of it, right? The other part of this is Talon. Is probably the best town in the state of Connecticut for selling water softeners. I don't know, like how many houses have water softeners in the town Talon. Um, and a lot of the homes that we're looking at in these areas, you know, when they first built these homes, they didn't need water. They got water, you know, it was like they're there, so you're, that is also taking salt and dumping it into the ground. On top of the road salt. So it's more salt added on top of salt that's sitting there, that's not filtering the way it's supposed to. And in Talon. If you ever tried to dig a hole, you're gonna hit slate, right? So when the, that's, that salt goes through the limited amount of soil and loom that we have. It's hitting that slate and it's right down, right to the aquifer. It's just like straight shot to the water. Um, and it's building in there. It's not dissipating, it's not breaking up, it's building up. Um, so it's a combination of expectations of people, what they think the road should be. We're just online this week, I saw a bunch of people complaining that towns' roads are so bad, they're not, blah, 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 blah. And I was like, I think they're fine. You know, don't go eighty. You know, like, it's a, expectations of roads. Um, making sure what we're using on the road is the absolute minimum amount that we need to do. And to be honest with you, maybe salt's not the right thing, but that, it has to be our level, that has to be state level to determine that, that it's not the right thing. But there is no clear alternative. Everybody around the country, Minnesota, New Hampshire, um, the Dakotas, they're all looking at this too. Because they're all finding the same sort of results, but nobody has found an alternative yet that actually works. Whether it's maple syrup or beet juice or like any of these other things, go back to sand and this and that. Um, and then also really educating people on when they should or should not be using a water softener. And how do we safely get rid of that salt? Where do we put it? Think it's almost like nuclear waste. Where do you put it? Like you're gonna take the salt, what do you do with it? Like, when you have it, you put it in a separate container. Um, it's really a trifecta of issues that are. Uh, I think my very first year on the council, Steve Wardner wanted to strangle me because I said, this is gonna be the next crumbling foundations. This is gonna be the next issue. And he was like, don't say that. And I said, uh, saying it.
A lot of towns have it. I can tell you in my town for decades are, we stored huge amounts of salt. Um, and the town, I wasn't responsible for it, but the town completely contaminated a whole neighborhood. Um, the problem with salt is salt readily is gonna seep water and it will not come out. Unless you take real big efforts to get it out and it flues far and deep. And in fact, if you look at EPA super fund reports, and we actually in Woodstock have a super fund site, interestingly, most people don't know it, but we do. So I actually had to read through these big EPA super fund reports, uh, on planning and zoning over the years. They show all sorts of chemicals, salts, everything, um, so how that, it maps out. It will rapidly extend and go deep. And so it loves water. So to get it out of water is a massive effort. Once it gets in, it really doesn't wanna come out readily unless you take a big effort and that's expensive. And it takes a long time to get it out. So, cause once you take it out and drop the concentration, if the salt's someplace else, it wants to. Fill the void. So it is a real vexing problem, but you're right, it's the application of salt and what the state was mandating. And also what happens over time when you start dumping salt all over the place. It has to go somewhere, unfortunately.
Oh, thanks for your patience.
Tim, you caught my interest when you were talking about EMS. There was just, ooh, and real quick, I mean, is, does the state can do any incentives? For the track or volunteers?
We are. There's all kinds of job force stuff that's happening right now. Tim's been working on a ton of apprenticeship stuff and that.
Public safety's been doing a lot of work to try to see what to do about recruiting and retention.
Yeah, there, there, there is, and actually there's, um, discussion about, you know, uh. Using Yukon, uh, students that are, uh, needing hours and, and having them participate in, in that. Uh, programs and, and housing them right at the fire stations and, you know, and getting their hours that way. So there is a collaboration going on and I think that's, Brian mentioned, you know, it, it, it's, it's a regional thing. That we can really work on, I think, together, uh, because it is a concern, um, that we, the, the. Company that is used by some towns is, is financially in distress potentially, uh, and then you're getting volunteers. If you remember, this is all done by volunteers in the past. And how do you get people to do that again? I mean, really, whether you go back and you look at your fire departments, it's, it's, it's in every, it's in every sector of volunteer. So that was just not this, but it really happens to be that whether you. but it really happens to be that whether you're trying to get people on your boards and commissions to volunteer or, you know, you know, you name it, you know, but it's just, and it's the same there. Uh, I think a lot of it has come down to back in the day, you volunteered and you hung out and you had your buddies and then well, you gotta take this class. You gotta do this certification. You gotta do that. So it becomes a full-time job essentially with no pay, you know? So, uh, but we are helping, uh, by allowing towns to offer tax, um, support. So in their, in their property taxes, you can, you know, get a, uh, it's not a mandate by the state. We allow you to offer a tax credit, uh, to people that are in the fire departments and EMS, uh, to, um, you know, uh, you know, other areas that we can support the town to, to help offer those. Uh, then it's something that hurts your, your tax base, you know, when they do that, but also gives you that ability to offset it uh, in a way if you had volunteers, you know, instead of paying sap.
Yes.
But it's a work in progress. It truly is, uh, to make sure. But, uh, yeah, I, I, you know, I, 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 my building that I, that I have is, uh, an old fire department. And when I bought it, I, no, there was no, there was no. Helmet and I do have the horn, that siren horn thing. Uh, but, um, but if you got photos of it back in the day, there was, you know, there wasn't fifty people lined up in a photo shop of volunteers back in the day. Now, if you had that, you would be, you'd be really happy, you know, where we've gone now to, to, to paying some staff. If you pay staff, you know, we're going to that area. So it depends on how we can best handle that and help support it. But, you know, you know, getting the care that you need for a person that needs an ambulance, you shouldn't have to wait, you know, too long to get that in.
So it's also how required.
We needed big time for backup ambulance and it's already been into service. So just knowing that that was a smart, like here is on the council, a very smart, um, thing. And we're gonna be doing a study next month and be curious what, you know, might bring up the regionalization that we keep talking about. That might be one of the things that talks about for ambulance and, um, but it's definitely a big component of EMS. Very important.
And your relationship with Yukon is huge. You know, that's it. You know, we, we just gotta, we gotta break the barrier to Yukon.
But what I would say, what a guy was a Yukon student.
But it also gets into the various growing requirements to do all your different levels of EMT and medical area. I mean, just what I have to go through and, you know, um, actually one of the easiest things I have, I can do. I maintain my ACLS, VLS and PALS for pediatrics. And so that's actually easy, but everything else is becoming more and more cumbersome, which who wants to then, if you volunteer, go through that more and more? Some of that has to be streamlined because it's really become outright ridiculous for it. But also more and more, as all towns know, the equipment just gets more and more expensive. And then the drug shortages don't help that. But also when the state mandates that EMTs and whatever have to carry certain drugs or things like that, you know, that adds up. When we talk about, you know, mandating having to have epinephrine and having to have Narcan, those are not cheap. Um, granted, the state is gonna do a bulk purchasing program, but if you, if you look at it, you know, every place now is buying all the Narcan and epinephrine again. So of course, just economics one oh one, supply goes down and the costs go up. And then when the FDA steps in, which it usually does, entails a manufacturing facility, and this happened with Narcan for a little bit of time. You're not, you're not following our rules correctly and we're gonna shut you down for a little bit. That just magnifies the problem. You know, so it's just all those added expenses, more and more. Regionalization can make sense. And actually, if you take a look at other parts of the country where there's really county government is strong. Uh, and I'm not advocating for county government here, but there are places where, you know, that is the real dominant uh, form of government in some of these big, big states. Um, they do huge amounts of regionalization and Connecticut can quite frankly learn from some of those barriers they break through to be able to streamline and do the bulk purchasing and things like that. So we'll see how that works, but it's gonna, it's gonna have to go that.
You know, usually, I, I don't, that's something I'm friends, I'm interested in and probably a lot of people are. But my thing with that is that, is the times getting to a patient, it's gonna be longer because now we're regionalized. Mine is always gets to the person soon as they can. So, but that's something that, and then when I said study, we're talking to a couple of people in February, then don't you, so we're not starting in February. But, um, so did you just say though that EMTs have to purchase their own Narcan and everything?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
But when more and more the state is mandating various things, then what happens is it just adds more expense. And that's, that's, that's a serious problem. We had discussions in public health about what to do with epinephrine. You know, part of that was, well, what's gonna be the cost? If you start more and more mandating, they have to purchase it and then some of it can go bad. In which case they have to now purchase, you know, the up-to-date stuff. So, um, that becomes, those are the real nuts and bolts issues, you know, about what are these expenses? And more and more equipment is just becoming more and more expensive.
I heard about expensive, just a structure is to help on an ambulance, which what was it, like forty or fifty? Right?
Yeah, something like that. It's, it's federal, so it's federal regulation. There's a separate issue that the Fed's more and more mandate and then towns have to follow.
And then back to the UCHN and Yale, so I work for UCHN, so I put my foot box up. But where are they like with, uh, I heard that Connecticut, it's the longest wait time for
It is.
Complex what they're doing, right? They had an agreement, didn't have an agreement. They want the state to pay for part of it now because of the hacking and everything else. Like there's so many things that are going into why this is dragging out, but it has dragged out far too long.
It has, and quite frankly, it's dragged out. To me, it proves why, number one, I'm working with others, including on the public health committee, that we have to reform certificate of need. Uh, there's no way, I mean, ideally you get rid of it and just start from scratch. I think it can be real simplified. Clearly they've gone, they've gone off the rails on this. Um, there's no reason they, they're needing to drag it out that long. Now Yale is saying that the value of UCHN and especially Rockville, which is the worst part of it financially. There, the value isn't there as much as it was. Of course, Prospect wants the most and Yale wants to pay the least. Yale wants the state to kick in eighty million dollars to purchase, and I agree with the governor. Why would a multi-billion dollar entity need state funding when there's other community hospitals that can readily do it, like money we got for Day Kimball in Putnam, which is an independent community hospital? So I, that's, that part's gonna go nowhere, but the real part of it is, um, that for some reason it's just being dragged out massively long. Um, and it really is gonna be the executive that just has to step in and say enough is enough. Um, and also what Yale wants to start closing more of the inpatient services that are there. And I've told them point blank, that's bad. I agree with it. Yale's the only entity right now interested in buying. So you, you'd have to be stuck with them to, to buy it out, but something's gonna have to push. And there's been lots of rallies, so to speak, and lots of meetings behind the scenes. And to be honest with you, I don't want to throw the governor under the bus, but I did tell him, you have to at some point step in and say, you gotta end this review, let Yale just do its negotiation with Prospect, let them handle that aspect. But the state just has to say, we're gonna approve it, we're gonna deny it, or we're gonna prove it with conditions.
Yeah.
And then let Yale and Prospect tackle out the private negotiations. But it's a real serious issue, because I can tell you, Rockville's, it's lucky it's still operational from, uh, cause it just, the funding is not there for it internally.
Sad thing is, is it's not that funding's not there. I know we're kind of getting down the weeds to this a little bit, but you know, me and the numbers. They make the money, right? And every night at the end of the day, their money all gets transferred to Prospect in California. And then Prospect decides what they're gonna send back for operations. So the money that they're generating in the state of Connecticut, Vernon is a, is a fairly, that's a fairly large, uh, you know, low income population. There's a pretty strong Medicaid, Medicare population there. So we're paying these hospitals like to do these things. And then this money is going to California. And California is taking it and saying, oh, hey, we like this, you know, we're gonna send you back, oh, we got a million today. We're gonna send you back three hundred thousand. Make it work. Right? That's a, that's a for-profit hospital entity, right? So it's, it's not that the money's not there. It's that Prospect is reaping it from all of these hospitals that they have right now. They can't pay their bills. Like these guys, we get calls from Debbie, the, the president over there, the CEO at, um, Rockville and, and Manchester and all that, saying, you know, we're literally on the docks with checks, writing checks for our vendors to get, to get their laundry. Like it's bad. So it's, but that's part of the problem when you take off, when you make it for profit, right? And that's why, like, again, we're not gonna, we're not gonna supplement that money going to California. I, I won't vote for the state taxpayers to pay eighty million dollars to go to Prospect in California. Prospect is getting a whole lot of Connecticut money as it is.
They made a lot of money off of this and also private equity firms coming in, buying hospitals is bad. There's no lack of studies, quite frankly, uh, on it. And so, uh, I'm aware of that. So there is efforts to see what we can do to not be having this happen.
Yeah, cause you don't wanna lose a community hospital. Cause then the next closest for Talon or Vernon is where, like?
Manchester?
No, but I mean, even at, so you.
But the big hospital systems like they kind of funnel it all. And that's what I fight against. I fought against it for years, that this consolidation is not good because they want you to go to the bigger ones where they have all those services. Those are also high-cost hospitals, if you look at what they charge. Um, and then the community hospitals get turned into ambulatory surgical centers, which is a big moneymaker. And also just all ambulatory services, because other than they don't want, you know, behavioral health, because they lose money. And emergency rooms lose money, but you have to have an emergency room. All the other outpatient services, if they're run correctly, they actually make their, their money revenues. And, and having worked in hospitals for years, you can see those, you know, those spreadsheets. But you don't want to have community hospitals just turned into, you know, places where people are picked up and shipped out.
Because as you just said, the EMS, the ambulances, we don't have enough ambulances to be tunneling these people. They're waiting.
I was gonna say, like, if there's really an emergency and they need to stop, cause they can't get to, like, say Hartford in time, at least they can stop at a ED, Rockville and Manchester and do what they necessarily do before they say if they need major surgery and then they ship them out.
Yeah, you can stabilize people. Set as best as you can. But it is a real issue. And this is what happens with consolidation. This was not a surprise. I railed against it years ago when I was state medical society president. Cause in other states have shown it doesn't work, but this is what we, we're dealt with. And then letting a private equity firm come in, you know, was bad. Um, and now look what happened. So I'm hopeful that will put some restrictions into it.
So that I can have my Yale sweatshirt.
You can get a Yale sweatshirt anywhere.
I know. Anyways, all right. Thank you. Yeah, of course.
Joe, did you have any questions?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we're, we're going in two hours, so I'm not gonna ask a lot of questions here. Um, I did want to echo Jacob's sentiments about law enforcement. I think whatever we can do at the state level to help our town, um, in, in two ways. Number one is to, to make these crimes that are committed, uh, uh, you know, the penalties more strict on the criminals. And also make sure that our, our law enforcement can do their jobs without fear of doing their jobs. So, you know, there's, there's two sides of this that we have to look at just to make sure. And, you know, things have been quiet in Talon recently and, and people, you know, tend to sort of fall asleep on it. Hey, it's not a big issue anymore. We haven't had any, you know, rogue type of incidences going on in front of Big Y. So, you know, everyone sort of forgets about it, but, uh, I don't think we want to do that. Um, it's not gonna end. So I think we, we still need to, to push hard on making sure these criminals are punished and our law enforcement can do their jobs. And then I appreciate too that you guys brought up the crumbling foundation thing. That was, that was one of my bullet points here. Just to make sure, yeah, this is a long-term problem, right? This is not gonna go away. It wasn't, it's not a ten-year problem. This is a thirty, forty-year problem. So we want to make sure that funding stays there. And, uh, and I guess my question, I have two questions, but, uh, my question is, how does the funding look? Um, you know, is the state in a good position to continue to fund, um, through the insurance, you know, that insurance fund that's coming through? Is it still looking good to fund the issues that we can foresee down the road? And then finally, uh, there was some discussions at the state level about, uh, eliminating the personal property taxes on automobiles. And, uh, I wanted to get, uh, to get your view on if that's gonna go anywhere. And then how would this towns be reimbursed for that? And it makes sense to get rid of this, right? Because, uh, from a state, a state perspective, we're not competitive. There's a lot of states that don't have property taxes on cars. And, uh, you know, I can see why we would try to eliminate that, but then it creates a problem at the town level.
Well, while the crumbling foundations, they are getting money. And we have to keep fighting to make certain that the state is giving the allotments that they're due on time. And that's been a struggle with the last two bucket loads of money. And the other is to make certain that there aren't continued efforts to pull money out. That means before the money finds its way in the process to get to crumbling foundations, there's a process. Money getting diverted before, which ultimately can mean less money for crumbling foundations. You know, again, there was an effort to do that. It was successful, unfortunately, to a small degree, this last session, but one needs to keep fighting uh, against that. There are folks who feel we should completely get rid of that insurance surcharge and not have any of, of, of that money go to crumbling foundations. Unfortunately, those get killed pretty quickly. Uh, but it is ongoing, continued effort. But right now, um, I can't get into real details of what gets discussed at board meetings. But overall, publicly, when they're saying that they're, they're still in a good financial situation, that is actually true for the time being. And we need to make certain from the state level, that continues, cause we all are happy that more and more of these crumbling foundations are getting into the pipeline to be assessed in fits. That's great. But there's a lot more ready to get into the pipeline. So you're right, it's not gonna go away anytime soon.
Sorry, Tim.
Oh, that's fine. No, just a follow-up, a follow-up on that. I think it's promoting the success of the program. You really, what happens, cause you kind of fall asleep on it. You know, we're just, we just continue to fix homes here in the area. Uh, raising the allotment to up to a hundred ninety thousand has helped keep some of the builders, uh, in, in, in the queue. And just listening to what Jim said, that, you know, he inspected twenty homes just last year. That's twenty more homes back on your full property tax valuation. And that's a value to your community. And that's really what needs to happen, is that we need to continue to promote the good thing that happens. The twelve dollar, uh, fund, the annual insurance for the, uh, healthy homes, it's actually called the, uh, Healthy Homes Program, where, uh, eighty-five percent of that money goes into the use for crumbling foundations. You know, if that needed to be addressed or assessed and increased, there's an opportunity there too. But right now, we're doing a good job. Uh, Mike McGlars and the crew over at SISIC, um, is, uh, you know, working diligently on it. And so I think that will continue. Uh, there's other areas that are popping up that may have, uh, foundation issues. I, I believe in a, a, another, uh, vein was, was founded. There's some other potential areas in Connecticut that will have, that may have crumbling foundations. So that helps, cause those, those, those reps, you know, would be on board to also continue to vote for bonding for that. I mean, we, we, we've been able to do a really good job in getting bonding for, uh, the foundation. So I think as long as we continue to promote the value that it is and that we're fixing homes and it gets them back on full tax rule evaluation for your communities, that's what you, you need to talk about. Uh, in terms of if need be to come, that, you know, hey, listen, you know, we have another four, you know, forty, fifty homes uh, that are being assessed right now at below value. If we get those back up to their full value after the foundation is fixed, then that helps your, uh, property tax, uh, issue and your taxes in your community.
Um, Joe, really quick, uh, last year we approved a hundred million dollars in the budget. It's been distributed at twenty-five million dollars a year. We've already done the twenty-five million this year. And it is earmarked for another twenty-five million for the next three years. And they also extended the homeowner policy out because I think that's giving another twelve to twenty million dollars a year. So there is definitely funding and stability for the next four years. Um, in regard to your car tax elimination, don't quote me on the exact number, but I think the study came back that the state would need to pony up, I think it was, uh, I want to say it was between one and three billion dollars that they have to pay the towns. And as I'm concerned, if, if they were to do that, um, you know, a, as we talked about in the beginning, it should be going toward, you know, the education funding, cause that's the highest percentage of the town budget. Um, but the state would have to find that money to pay the towns. Because, or, you know, you can't fabricate the money, whether it's us paying the towns for that money or paying the state or the state finding a way to fund it. It's, um, it's a couple of billion dollars worth of taxes that are collected on motor vehicles in the state of Connecticut.
And we don't want to be using more state taxes to pay for it, because you're just still taking money. And we don't want to be using more state taxes to pay for it because you're just still taking money out of. People's pockets one way or another, but there's been some proposals that way. Taxing certain populations or businesses to try to bring revenue in. To help alleviate the issue with the uh, you know, the car, you know, property tax. And just one quick thing about your point about public safety, as I said earlier tonight. We really need to make certain that our law enforcement, who does a phenomenal job, I believe, day and night, I I couldn't do that type of work. Um, that they're trained to do, that they should be better. Allowed to do, and that would be reversing some state laws. But also the effort that's happened, and we saw this also last session of not holding. Certain criminals accountable the way that they should be accountable, including repeat offenders. And everything that happened with the quote unquote um. Uh, crisis that occurred with the um Board of Pardons and Paroles, which had to be worked out uh with with the governor's effort. Um, we have to do a better job holding them accountable because if we're not going after them the way we should. And then when they're caught, they're just given a little slap on the wrist. Well, they're just gonna go ahead and do it again. Those are ongoing fights and we'll see what more the judiciary committee does. Uh, but I've been very vocal that I haven't felt that the judiciary committee's proposals last session. Uh, for most of them were good. There were some that were good, but most of them were not. And I don't think that's going in the right direction from public safety.
Okay, thanks. Good points. Appreciate it, guys.
Thanks, Joe. Jen, did you have any questions?
Sure, I had a couple of questions. Um, first of all, thank you for being here. Um, I wish I was there in person uh for this. Um, going back to the topic of public safety, you mentioned um holding uh repeat or persistent offenders accountable. Um, my question is, uh, what are the ideas that the state has um to do that? We have uh persistent offender enhancements already. Um, you know, it sounds like to me you're saying that those don't work. Um, so so what? What are we gonna do instead of these persistent offender enhancements or what are we gonna do to change them? And how is that gonna affect our recidivism rates?
Well, my feeling is that some of the laws that were passed last session and some even before I was a legislator, I didn't think were the right direction. I think it's weakening, holding them accountable. I think we need to stop some of that. Not all the bills were bad. There were some that were very reasonable for folks who. Who are committing very minor offenses and how we, you know, try to deal with them uh in an appropriate way. But some of the real serious crimes, especially the ones who keep repeating these crimes. Um, I don't think we're going in the right way trying to hold them accountable. We need to, I believe. Stop going down that road with weakening the system and really go back to holding them accountable. Um, using common sense with the severity of the crime. Um, and also certain aspects about age and what happens with, for example. When they do go to jail, there was a whole big problem with what would happen with uh pardons and paroles. So there was a big issue with the parole system that is being worked through to really. Redo its policies that clearly were not right and shaving off people who were committing domestic violence murders. And shaving off ten, twenty, twenty-five years off of their sentences, which caught a lot of people off guard as it was happening behind the scenes. So I think first and foremost, you've got to stop going down the wrong path. And then try to bring some things back in line in tandem with making certain we give the resources to police officers. To try to get out there uh and do things, especially proactively and let them do what they're trained to do.
And and Jennifer, on on top of that, you know, one of the things that we do as as lawmakers um is put in place. Laws that uh for for different reasons, right? But then it's up to the judicial system to then adhere to the laws that we put in place. Too often, somebody gets arrested and it's pleaded down. And so even though the first crime may be the, you know, of a certain level and then happens again. And so um over time, which which is, you know, I'm not in the, at least I'm not in in the judicial side of things, but this is what we see and this is what we hear about. Is, you know, how did, how can they possibly have done this this many times? Uh, and still be out in on on the streets. And so sometimes it's just that. You know, that when we put the laws in place and the um, the the level of severity of the law and. But if when you start to get to the court system, that that starts to change. And so that may be an area that really needs to be addressed if there's a, you know, a continuation of breaking the law. Um, that there's, there's gotta be a way that we adhere to the, what we put in statute. Uh, and rather than it being pleaded down to a lesser crime or whatever it may be. Uh, just to get it through, just to get it through the process. So there's a lot to be looked at. Again, the um judicial committee has worked. Uh, when they got, I don't know how many bills they voted on last year and worked on last year. So it's a very. Um, you know, every bill that they put in place actually gets raised uh and discussed. And so it'll be a continuation. But I think we need, we need to hear from the public on a lot of this, you know. Uh, you know, we just had a legislator, you know, on the side not to run for reelection. And one of her parting comments, she's gonna finish out this term is that. The, you know, the the residents of Connecticut need to engage their legislators. They, she's, she saw a a a a real law.
I'm sorry, my my screen is frozen. Is everyone still there?
Yeah, mine mine froze too, Jennifer. So it's not just you.
I I think it's.
Mine did as well. But I can hear you guys.
Lost.
Yeah, hopefully they fix it on their end. Yeah, mine is frozen as well, so.
Okay. Glad to know it's not just me. I thought maybe my internet went.
Recording stopped.
They shut us down.
That's it. We hit the, we hit the two and a half hour mark.
Wrap it up. Start playing the music.
You broke it.
I'm not sure what happened. They may. They may start, they may start it up again. I'll I'll try to text Brian. I'm not sure what happened, but. Everyone on Zoom is is okay, but they froze. If I find anything out, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just got any uh texts that they have. They're having a wifi issue, which is apparent. Brian's trying to call me right now. Hold on. Hey, Brian.
Is it back? Brian, give me his phone.
Oh, hi.
And we're gonna try to do this in a patch through way. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. So Jen, do you have any follow up questions?
Um, I I do. So it was, it was kind of cut short at the end because I think we lost wifi. Um, is the gist of what I heard is, is the answer is maybe limiting the state's attorney's ability to substitute charges?
Well, I think, Jennifer, I think it comes down to what the individual is being arrested for, right? And happens when they go to court. So there's there, so, you know, essentially, you know, you know, and then, you know. We're protecting you. So in in a way also, but there's a just a different. Style of policing than there has been in the past, you know, you know, someone stealing a car. Hey, it's too bad it was a car. Uh, we're not gonna chase the car, you know, so there's just a different attitude. Uh, and process that we're handling with our police forces now and, you know, I've. Been, you know, um, here a long enough to to see that change. And I've been in in office in the legislature long enough to see uh how we're handling things. And, you know, just recently, the the governor um. Um, expunged, I guess is the term, uh, eighty thousand, um. Um, yeah, um, what do you call it? Um.
Oh, the fella. It's like, well.
Yeah, the Queen's slate, right? So erase them. Um, and so those are off the individuals um. Records. It's just, it's a different, um, it's a different way to govern right now in a different way than police. Um, i- is handling it the way I think. Um, and so you see crime is is uh in some areas is increased and. You know, what, how we're handling those has been much different. And I think a lot of it comes down to. You know, um, are we arresting them? And then secondly, are we holding them accountable when they go to court?
And again, what the legislature does with its laws, I believe, has had an impact over time.
Hi, Jen. I don't think we've ever actually met, so it's nice to meet you. Um, but uh my concern with the the justice stuff, justice reform. Is mainly around people who are um out, who have multiple warrants. Um, I have talked to many police officers. I have heard numbers of, you know, the guy had fifty warrants out, you know, and that like it's, that to me is crazy. Um, I think we have to do better at, um, if somebody has multiple warrants out, at some point, we need to start thinking about society as a whole and. Um, how do we handle the people who have warrants like that? I'm also very concerned with people who are out on bail who reoffend. Uh, and how we can um, how we can lessen that, you know, I'm especially concerned around domestic violence. I think it's very confusing that a simple, uh, not simple, but a simple domestic violence claim can have to go through civil court, family court, criminal court. In trying to kind of navigate all of that. Um, definitely concerned about, again, people who are out on, who are charged with domestic violence and then out on bail. And those reoffenders, um, I just think we have to kind of tighten up what we're doing. We have to look at what's working and what's not working and. Um, recognize the fact that sometimes that means we have to have people in jail when they're waiting to be prosecuted instead of, oh, we lost them again.
You're not, that's me trying to log on.
Okay, confused. Um, so that, those are really my concerns on it and um. Trying to figure out where we can um, where we can improve safety for the residents.
Okay, and I guess my last question, I'll I'll try to be brief. Um, since we're a town that uses the services of the state police. Um, what if anything is the state doing about police accountability in light of the investigation into the Connecticut State Police falsified traffic tickets?
Well, that's been a fun issue in public safety. But part of it has been waiting to see more and more what's happening with uh the the investigation. While I'm really, you know, breaking down, we did have a public hearing last year on it initially. But then there's been more data and more reviews that have come out. So my understanding, having spoken with the chairs of public safety, uh, is that. Stay tuned, there's gonna be more discussion about it, but also not wanting to interfere with active investigations and active reviews. And so I think some of what was initially said during the public hearing that the committee held. Some of those numbers didn't fully hold water to some of the scope. Uh, once there were some further reviews and try to really drill down to certain things. So I think this will take up some of our time on public safety, again, depending upon these different. Uh, reviews and investigations. There's more than one investigation.
I I think we have let the investigation play out to its fullest and then we look at how we ensure it doesn't happen again.
And there is new leadership. I don't know if it's new anymore, but it's new in in the scheme of things with regards to. Uh, the agency and things like that. So be interested to see what happens when we really get the data. You know, and the reports of the investigation. But one of the comments I had made during that public hearing. Where there was, you know, some politics that rose up and some and other things. That we really don't want to interfere with these investigations. We should let them be investigated, let them do what they need to do and then report back. And then we can take it back up. But we'll see where that, where that stands. But I think there's gonna be legislation proposed in public safety about it.
Senator, I have some questions in regards to the leadership that we have here in town with regards to law enforcement. Are any of them on the list? And if any of them are involved in the um investigation and found that wrong, can we find out about it? A, B, are any of our residents, were they listed and their plates run and entered in the system and entered as having been given the ticket? Are their names in that list? So when another cop pulls them over now, let's say Katie drives by a cop. And he runs her plate in the system and enters her as having a ticket. He never gave it to her hypothetically. Which is basically the crux of the whole investigation.
Yes.
Her name's now in the database. The cop, no, she gets pulled over again. Now it looks like she just got pulled over a time before. Now maybe he's gonna be a little harder on her because now she's been pulled over once, twice or three times, depending on where this happened. But you know, Troop C was involved in it very deeply here, uh, important to the numbers. I would argue that uh Ken Barone and his people who did the investigation scaled back the number before they presented them. There could be more numbers. It's, again, I agree with you, let the federal investigation, let the state investigation and the internal investigation. Uh, play out. Uh, but at the same time, I ask of you, please, when it does come out, protect your towns. Find out who who was involved in it. Do we have them as our leadership? And then were our residents affected? Most importantly, are we on those lists? So that that, those are my greatest concerns.
And I agree with you because it um, it as was brought out during the public hearing we had, you know, those who are. Found to have committed offenses should be held accountable.
Frankie.
There's no question about that, that they should. But the also is what's the scope? You're right, having affected the public. I haven't, you know, I I'm not privy to that detailed data, uh, but that's.
I think you're muted now.
I think they just.
Okay, we can hear you.
So I'll be real, I just want to say that those who are found to have committed offenses, not the public, I'm talking about anybody in law enforcement. They should be held accountable. I think that was been a pretty unanimous view of the public safety committee. On the other hand, I agree with you, uh, Brian, we want to make certain that there's any public, any members of the public that got wrapped up in this, none of their. Their fault. We don't want them to be held accountable. So that way, you're right, someone pulls them over and says, oh, you've already been pulled over for this and, you know, this is a repeat offense, but in fact, it wasn't. So that's all stuff that. That I hope the public safety committee or the legislature will be looking at for that brand new data. I have not been sent any of that detail because it's all been, I guess, embargoed in these investigations, but it's gonna have to come out.
Right, who's, who got, who got, who got falsely entered into that system? I'm, I'm in there. I'm sure. Falsely?
It depends what, what, I agree with you. That's all the stuff that's really gonna have to be looked into and vetted through. So it's gonna be heavy lifting, but as far as I'm concerned, it needs to be done. You're right, members of the public.
And 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 thank you, Brian. Um, I think you you raised what I was trying to get at. You know, we need to be able to have confidence in our law enforcement. Um, and so if if things are being done wrong and 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 by all means, there are some very, very good troopers.
Recording in progress.
Um, but uh, we need to give the public a sense of of the ability to have confidence. In the people who are protecting them. in the people who are protecting them. Um, and, and that does mean, you know, holding those accountable who have done wrong. Um, uh, just so we can move past this. And, and so again, I think for the town of Tallent, especially since uh, reports have shown that Troop C was, um, heavily indicated, uh, we, we would really appreciate an update on that.
And I think we're going to be getting an update as far as my understanding is all the troops and all the divisions and really get down to the granular level once we get these investigations back. And those were asked for during the public hearing that was held with judiciary and public safety, that we really want all of that. We don't want to just get, you know, the cliff notes and not be able to delve more into it to better understand it. So my understanding is there is a commitment at the appropriate time to get all of that stuff out and certainly get it reviewed and sorted out how to handle it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks Jen. Um, I think everybody.
Alex.
Yeah, um, everybody's had a chance to go through one time, right? Yeah, I think I'm the only one. So, um, I see your hand up, Alex. I'm going to ask my questions first and then we'll go for a second round.
Yep, my turn.
So one of the, uh, thank you for answering all the questions you've answered so far. Lots of information. It's great. Um, all good information. Thank you. What can we as a council do to, uh, support you as you're working towards supporting our talents?
Well, I think it just come, you know, if there's a, well, first of all, let us know, you know, if there's legislation that's come out that, you know, like we ask, you know, typically at the beginning of the session, is there a grant that you're going for? Is there something that you need us to sign on to? Is there something that you need us to support to kind of push it? You know, it, for a small town having three, uh, people in, in Hartford, as you know, many towns, you know, you know, could have one rep, one senator, uh, you've got two reps. So that is, you know, if you see something that needs to be pushed, let us know because then we'll, if we have to go in and sit at a public hearing, you know, on your behalf, even if it's not a committee of ours, all right, that we go in and testify on your behalf, submit to us if you can't be there or come to sit, you know, if it's a committee that we're, that, uh, that we sit on, a bill that comes forward to us, uh, that, you know, you know, whether it's the car taxes, you know, please, you know, you know, that, you know, you know, how is that going to help and or hurt towns? Uh, in terms of, it's just going to raise property taxes on your residents. It really was going to happen on your homes and your businesses. But how, that's the key. It's that if you identify something, you know, we, you know, there's going to be, even though it's a short session, there's still going to be four thousand bills coming out. It's sort of been a way of a letter now, you know, right? And as you know, there's been a way of a letter. So there's still going to be that much workload. Um, so it's looking at planning and development. It's looking at areas that really are, that, that you guys, uh, finance appropriations. Those are the areas that you're going to look at for bills that would be probably affecting your communities. Where we can be of support, where we can be of defense, right? And so that's what really happens. You know, let us know where we can be, help you.
It's a team approach. I always felt that when I was in town government and not in the legislature, and I still feel the same way, that number one, government works best when it listens to people. So part of what my job is, is to listen to people and why I spend a lot of time out and about just hearing what people have to say and hearing their concerns, ideas, comments, things like that. But the same for you. You know, I maintain an open door policy. People can reach me on my cell number. They can text me. Oftentimes I don't go to bed until one in the morning anyway, so sometimes I'm replying at that time. Um, but, you know, when we're doing the work, you know, I serve on four committees, but I try to track all the committees and I have staff that does that for me. But things that are of importance to you, that you feel is important to the people of Tallent, the more we can hear that as, as the legislative team for you, the more we can be advocating. But also a lot of this stuff can happen, as we all know, in the middle of the night in a session, where suddenly something comes out at two in the morning and we have to pivot and react to it. So uh, I think the more there's the lines of the communication open, and it doesn't have to be my, as far as I'm concerned, my coming to you at council meetings, feel free to reach out anytime. And if anyone on the council doesn't have my cell number, I'm happy to provide it. And more than happy to hear can be something little. Can you look into this bill? Um, can, you know, what's up with this? Or how is this going to affect us? Or, you know, have you thought of, has, has the committee thought of this? Chances are the committee might not have thought of your idea, and we can bring that to a committee. And just because we don't serve on a committee, doesn't mean we can't liaison with a, with a committee. And then the other thing I just want to let people know is never think your voice is not being heard. And there are opportunities the way, and you don't have to be there in the middle of the night waiting. You're in line. And I've done that for, in prior years before Zoom, to testify for your, how much time do they give people? Two minutes, three minutes? And then they, and then, but if you want to testify, you can do it by Zoom if you want. But there's also opportunities that if we know someone's going to testify and it's a committee we serve on, we're able to be of help. Sometimes we can ask questions and give people more time to say what they want to say and be advocating and, you know, and try to magnify. So we're always happy to do that. And I would tell all the citizens of Tallent, take advantage of it. It's their government. They should be absolutely included uh, and know what's going on and feel that they have an opportunity, even if it's just, I mean, I, I can get hundreds of emails a day in my office. I'm buying people, just that's how they want to communicate, but at least feel that you, that they want to participate. And if they're not certain how to participate or how to send testimony, we're happy to help them. Anytime.
Hold me, did you, uh? Oh, me? I'm sorry. You don't have to. I just didn't want to go onto my next question.
That's okay. Listen, uh, I, I honestly believe about eighty percent of Tallent has my personal cell phone number, so.
I know, I know all of them has my cell phone.
So, uh, you know, honestly, the, the thing that helps me the most is, you know, having access to Brian, you know, having access to the leadership and stuff like that to be able to send legislation to, to say, how is this going to affect us? You know, how are you going to interpret this? How's it going to, is this going to help us or is this going to hurt us? Um, and, you know, it, I will do whatever I can always to help Tallent, the town of Tallent, you know, to the town of Wellington, the town of, you know, that's my goal is to really just, how do I help the residents? I truly honestly just got into this because I just want to help people. So, um, anything that I always say too, to Brian, to everybody else is, you know, what is the town need this year? Do we have any projects coming up? You know, is there something that you want me to pursue funding on? Um, I'm always looking out for ECS funding. I'm always looking out for, you know, how we're going to get more money back into the town. So it's just, especially now that I'm not sitting up there, you know, I don't, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in on all of the stuff that we need. So as stuff comes up, as you have concerns, get it to, get it over to me and, and I'll do whatever I can to, you know, push it forward. So that's the best, the best thing I can say, how you can help me is just open lines of communication.
Excellent. I, um, I, I, I know I walk a fine line, uh, as I work, uh, for the executive branch. Um, but I think that, let's start here. The budget process here in town is painful. It sucks. Um, and every single year we as a town are faced with asking questions about what services can we do without? Um, what services can the kids do without? And how are we going to pay for the priority services? And the answer to that in a town like Tallent with not a lot of commercial or business development is it's paid directly by our property taxpayers. And what, how does this end? What does this look like for any property taxpayer in two years, in five years, in ten years, in twenty years? Can my kids grow up in town and have their kids go to the school system? Not the way things are looking. This is broken. And we can't fix it on a town level.
Yeah.
It can be fixed on a state level. Can you fix it for us?
Katie? Listen. As I said, okay, but no, honestly, the, the question here really comes down to, again, um, is this one of passion point of mine, for as long as I can remember. State of Connecticut is constitutionally obligated to provide a free and public education to every child in the state. They abdicate that duty and give it to the towns, which causes massive amounts of disparity, like across the board. And it causes massive levels of trauma, like you're just saying with the little budget thing, in funding, right? So to me, the state of Connecticut fails miserably when it comes to public education. If you took public education out of your town budget, or even if you took sixty percent of public education out of your town budget, if we went so far as to say the state of Connecticut ECS formula starts out saying that it costs one eleven thousand five hundred and forty dollars per child to educate a child in the state of Connecticut. If the state of Connecticut paid every town eleven thousand five hundred and forty dollars as their base amount regardless, and then added on special needs, English learners, you know, free and reduced lunch, and gave more money to the towns, the cities and the places that needed it, it would alleviate the majority of the budget issues that we have. It would lower property taxes and it would make Connecticut not number two in the state, than the country for the highest property tax. That's the key. That is the key to me. That is how you make these towns more sustainable. It's how you increase, how you make the, the system better. It's how you get more diversity into your town. It's how you do all of it. It is making the state of Connecticut accept their responsibility for educating public school children, period. I'm trying like hell. It is a hill. There's a flag on it. I am crawling up it all the time. I'm having arguments on both sides of the aisle that we're not doing enough and this can't be pitting Tallent against Hartford, Waterbury, New Britain, but you know, all of the, all of the cities going down the highway. It can't be about taking from us and giving to another. It has to be about the state of Connecticut stepping up and educating the children of the state. And in doing that, you alleviate all those problems that you just said. I'll keep preaching it and I keep trying to find more allies. I've got a few people that are agreeing with me now. You know, I've gotten, I've gone from like the crazy lady screaming that the state of Connecticut sucks at educating kids to like, probably about a good handful plus of people who are like, hey, you've got a point. Um, so working on it. That is my goal. That has always been one of my goals. I bow to you here. It will be my goal until we get it fixed.
And it's how the state spends money. I don't think the spend actually has a money problem. It actually has a way it spends its money. Um, and some of what it spends its money on, I don't think is really fully funding its core responsibilities. I believe you should be focusing on your core responsibilities. And then if you have additional money, you can decide what to do with it. But I agree with you with, you know, you read through a lot of the courtroom rulings. Of course, it's said that, uh, about, you know, what Connecticut is not doing, but it's also where we as a state, spending our money in these, you know, billions of dollar budgets and what can be repurposed and realigned to some of these core government responsibilities like public education. But of course then that you're taking money away from other projects and things like that that others don't fight for. So it's always, you're right, it is always an uphill battle, but I agree with Tammy. It's a battle that needs to just keep being fought. You just can't get in and say, you know, we've tried and we can't do anything more. But also realistically, it's not anything that's going to be solved overnight, especially in a short session this year. But it doesn't mean one can't keep fighting and fighting. I think there's been some things that were really fought for last session. And just needs every time, and it just needs to be fought every session.
I think, I think, you know, a, a, an easy area to look at, special ed funding. You know, where if you look at what your town alone spends in special ed funding, uh, and then you look at where the state's obligation statually says it's supposed to pay and it doesn't. Uh, and then the federal government doesn't pay the state for the special ed funding that it's supposed to pay. So it's one of these, where do we start getting the money from first? Do we talk to our federal delegation to say, will you pay Connecticut the mandated requirement for special ed funding so that we can then pay the towns? What they're, what we're required to, because they don't. They don't fully fund the special ed in statute funding. And if we just started there, if you look at that dollar amount for your, for years, you would say, okay, you know, we could balance a budget a lot easier if we just got the mandated allocation from the state. Uh, so, um, her colleague and Senator Austin has identified this as a, as a key area that we really need to work on. Uh, it's special funding and the, but getting to that federal allotment that we're supposed to get, we don't get, so.
That's a whole separate level, what happens with the feds.
I, I would, I would say very publicly, um, and, and put this offer out. I want to fix this too. And if there's anything I can do, call me.
Yeah.
Because
Yeah.
we as a town need the state step up. And if we can't get this tax structure fixed to fund education and other services that make this an awesome place to live, we are on a, a road to failure. And we can't do this alone as a town. We can't. Um, and, and we need help.
And we, we need more voices like yours because you get to see it from both ends. You see the battle that takes place on budgeting on the, on the state level, and then you see it at the local level. And you got to sit there and say, well, wait a minute. We got to find a way to partner the state side and the local government side to come up with solutions? You know, is it saying, hey, let's try this no car tax thing. Let's try this out for a while. Well, maybe that might not be the idea, great idea. How about maybe we fully fund our special ed fund? Let's start with that, see how that helps it. So that with your view, we need more people at your level, uh, you know, working, you know, and happening at both sides, you know, that are working in local government and also have an ear to the people at the state side.
And every town faces this, as we know.
Yes.
So it's really, you know, each town sometimes just feels it's trying to fight its own fight. I mean, I deal with this in all thirteen of my vote. I actually have fourteen technically, um, school districts to deal with, uh, because there's really two in Woodstock. So, um, every town deals with it. But you're right, it's really where are we at the state level using the money? Tim is right, what happens to the federal money, which is a whole separate entity that, you know, and, and an issue to deal with to, because otherwise it just all trickles down to being, you're dumped in your lap. I see this for years in my town that we wrestle with paying for education, which is eighty, at least eighty-five percent of our budget. And those are real issues. And then you're right, people yelling, screaming about their property taxes, but at the same time they yell and scream about, you know, their services. And you can't have it both ways. So it's really, how do you balance that? But again, I agree, the state has a responsibility, has not been living up to it. And one has to really at some point, you know, get enough people on board at the state level to say we really need to, you know, do a better job and have the money we have, how it's fat.
You know, Katie, if you look at the ACS formula, when it's totally played out, I've, I've testified in front of education a couple of times on this. I've sent countless letters. If you look at that ACS formula when it's done, we're going to be giving Hartford, I think it's thirty-four, almost thirty-five thousand dollars a year per kid, where we're going to be giving like a hundred and nineteen towns two thousand dollars or less. You can't do that. You can't value the child's education on this info. You have to say, what is the base cost of educating this child? And what is the state responsibility for that? And then build on, yeah, I know, it costs a hell of a lot more money to educate a kid in Hartford. I'm not saying that Hartford doesn't deserve thirty-five thousand dollars per kid. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is it costs a hell of a lot more than two thousand dollars to educate a kid in the town of Tallent. And that child in the town of Tallent is no more or less valuable than the child that is in Hartford. So where's the state's responsibility on this? They are failing. We are failing miserly in recognizing that. That is the biggest thing that we have to get over. We have to find a way to comfort that. I just, you know, I, I said, I, I know all the time, like, if we're, if we can't fix this, it's not going to get better. So.
And so I guess I would ask you as a constituent, as a member of this town council, you know, I know how crazy it gets in Hartford during any session, short or long. Uh, I know how distracting, uh, all the lobbyists and the, uh, you know, this bill blew up and, and I know how, how I've seen it play out. I would ask you guys to try to keep in mind that, you know, when you're talking about um, public safety reform or other issues that are still important, that the big issue that we are facing here in town isn't being addressed. And, and how can you, as our representatives there, ensure that this big, huge issue that every homeowner in Tallent faces, every single one, whether they vote for you, they don't, we're all facing it. whether they vote for you, they don't, we're all facing it. And please keep this in mind and, and help us.
And I do, I usually keep a little, I'm still a fan of index cards. So I actually do keep, and I'll show people, here are some of the key bullet points. Education is always one of the top ones. As far as, you know, if someone comes to me and lobbyists do or agencies, oh, can we get a million dollars here or a million dollars there? Because we want to do this additional program. And I'm like, that's nice, but why can't we, why aren't you advocating for these things? And I'll show them, you know, and public education is one of them that's on it. So, and everyone in this state, no matter where they are, this is an issue.
Yes.
To me is one of the top issues, public education. Um, you know, it's not an easy fix.
No.
I think we're realistic. On the other hand, I agree, we keep fighting and pushing. And just not advocating for our town, but everyone's advocating for their districts. But also, what can we do overall globally for the state of Connecticut? And by all metrics, the state of Connecticut just fails in its responsibility, including several things, just not public education. And that, that's just a continued fight.
Well, we, you know, we're looking to you, so please help.
Happy to work with you anytime.
Thanks for your patience, Alex.
Yeah, no problem. Did you guys hear me?
Yeah.
So just something quickly, uh, that I wanted to go back to with the, you know, the unique situation of, of the car break-ins here in Tallent. Um, I definitely echo what the senator is saying on, on giving these law enforcement officers the tools back to adequately do their job. And I certainly echo Brian's sentiments on, you know, crime-driven policing, you know, through statistics that we may have or not have. Um, you know, with my background as a police officer, um, and the reports that we do have, um, you know, unfortunately, I think Tallent's considered, like other towns, to be target-rich, being right off of a highway. Um, and then specifically with car break-ins, you have to have a crime of passion, and that's the want to do the crime, and then the crime of opportunity. Um, and unfortunately, the opportunity arises when you have your keys in the ignition, your wallet there. Um, that certainly doesn't help the situation, so. Um, you know, and given these statistics, Senator, I, I, the question I had was, given that the majority of these, um, you know, criminals coming into town or towns, um, are on that border age of juveniles into adults, that that would be my question, if we could heighten some of the, um, punitive measures that we would take on. So, so, you know, juveniles, but, but really, you know, these, these kids are bonding up and doing the same thing a week, a week later.
Well, there were some efforts off of, I think it was like the last few hours, at least when Senate was in session, uh, rolling back some of that, not specifically for people less than eighteen, but was it up to age twenty-five? Or trying to remember what came out with the bill.
Um, you mean raise the youth age?
Yes.
Yeah, they're trying to raise the youth age.
Initially was to say
For twenty-five. Twenty-five, you're a youth.
Right. You, you would be considered a juvenile, which would, it carries its whole separate role handling things. But, but again, it gets to how, what are we doing as a legislature, uh, relative to providing resources to law enforcement? Uh, but again, getting back to the point that if there's any, anyone, including law enforcement, proven to commit a crime, then people are held accountable and should be. But on the other hand, providing the resources to our law enforcement. And then what do we do when these criminals are then caught going through the judicial system? You know, what are the laws that are, I think, have weakened things? But also what happens then with all the pleas and with the, uh, you know, the, uh, some of the paroles and things like that? It's a, it's a multi-layer issue, but it does come down to a lot of different laws that have been put into place, uh, that I, I, I think some of them have not helped in the right direction. And we need to really relook at that, because I don't think some of it is working. And we need to really take a serious look to find out why isn't it working and take a different direction. But again, on the other hand, we just want to make sure anything we're doing, uh, is common sense. Not just saying we're doing something just so we can, you know, clap at the end of a session, oh, we addressed it, and then we move on to something else. Because every, every day, there's issues with public safety. I hear it in all of my towns. Many of my towns have no resident trooper and we have to rely upon some troop, like in Woodstock, we have to rely upon troopers coming from Danielson, um, to, to address crime issues. And we're a very large-sized town, the second largest town geographically to roam around, you know, and so those are issues. And also we're mindful, um, that there are things that come down from the border. Uh, and towns that are bordering Massachusetts, there are issues that come down. You know, where, where folks are coming over committing crimes and then hop back to Massachusetts. So, you know, towns that are on borders with other states, there are other layers of issues about what our police can do relative to folks coming in from other states, and those are real issues as well.
Yeah, I have to agree. And just, just to, just to implore this, this council, I, I think that we're all on the same page. Um, I would wish, but this goes back to allocating our resources towards getting a sergeant here in town. Um, many of these car break-ins, um, are exacerbated by, um, weapons in the car, you know, individuals fleeing into outcroppings of buildings in town, um, and so on and so forth, which would certainly aggravate the crimes. Um, and then to echo Brian again, I mean, having crime-driven statistics of, you know, where these specific instances are happening, probably close to the egresses main, uh, you know, closer to the highway, or maybe some of the back egresses to town is, is paramount, I think.
Thank you. Does anybody have any more questions? It's always an exciting night when our state delegation comes. So thank you very much for coming. Uh, thank you for your continued work, because it's not easy. Um, and we, we rely on you, so thank you for all you do. Reach out. Thanks for having me. I'm going to be around.
Thank you for having us. And again, Alex, for those of you who already have my cell number, you can use it. If you don't have the cell number for new counselors, I'll get it out to you guys. Happy to work with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Night. See you soon.
Thanks, guys.
Take care. Yeah, make sure to see.
All right.
Still up? About soon. Is it really?
Yeah, that's ten.
We're at ten.
Yeah.
And you started earlier. You logged on early, right?
Me?
Yeah, we had, I mean, sorry, we had, we were logged on early.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Well, let's see what happens.
Yep.
So we're going to move on now to item eight point four on our agenda. Um, there are two appointments in our packet, uh, one for inland wetlands, one for land acquisition advisory. I don't know, uh, Chris or Joe, did you want to say anything?
I'll just say that Joe and I did our, uh, usual vetting process. Uh, I think both individuals will be, uh, fantastic. Um, so I would recommend, uh, that the town council approve them.
Thank you.
Yeah, agreed.
Awesome. Is there then a motion to approve the appointments in eight point, I'm sorry, eight point four A and eight point four B?
So most.
Oh, boy. That was really fun. So
Seconded.
Jen made the motion and Chris seconded. Okay. All right. So we're going to do a roll call vote, and it's our first roll call tonight. This is very exciting. Uh, Alex?
Yes.
Joe?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Colleen?
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
I'm also an I, so that is unanimous. Thank you. Woo. I think there might only be a few more votes, so we're good. Okay, so next on our agenda is old business. We do not have any. Brian, you get to go next and report on the town meeting.
Okay, um, while we're on, uh, public safety, I, I sit on the CCM Public Safety Committee. We spoke happily about, uh, this, this month about, um, street takeovers and increasing laws, a lot of them were in relation to town being able to enact ordinances. However, we don't have a police department here or being forced by the state police. So I, I asked very happily that CCM, uh, make sure when they file, make any new legislation around that, that the state police, uh, are included in the laws. So for towns like Tallent, like a lot of towns, I would see involved in that. Fire station three forty, you can see the window panes, uh, and paneling are going up. They, uh, look great. Uh, you wrote all taskboards, as you mentioned before, we have a public meeting on, uh, at six thirty on Thursday night. Uh, they spoke at the dis- dispensary, the permit had been applied for, and they've started construction of the building in there. Santini Development is, uh, sewer connections are ongoing, our, uh, DBW directors out there often. Uh, the rink was a, the ice rink at Crandall's, I think, was a resounding success. The ice is still open, although it'll likely be closed in a day or two, as it was slushy tonight, but it was still being used. Um, and skated on, it's like I went by before I got here. Um, some, I, I have a meeting with the state police, uh, Thursday. We're supposed to be vague, but they bumped it. Waiting on Rick on a few things, but the town council has some stuff in their emails to, to look at in regards to that. We're moving forward with the public safety consultant. It's, uh, Sarah Beth and Mike are working to schedule it.
February sixth.
February sixth. And that, that's pretty much all I have there.
Are there any questions for Brian on the town manager's report?
I'll just say once again, that this is, I said, public, whatever, last two, a couple of weeks ago, Brian. Thank you, and Katie and Sarah Beth, and thank her again for getting the study on, um, in February. Yeah, it is very important, especially, this is a lot of, we're swinging around about regionalization, so I think this is a little tough. Uh, so I just wanted to say, thank you.
What was the time on that again? Is it?
February sixth, seven P M, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
So typically in regards to regionalization, if we were to regionalize,
Yeah.
you would hire a consultant specifically for that. That would be split up by the, the towns that are involved, um, in that sort of thing. So I don't know, this one here, this is
Well, I, I'm wondering if they'll just be like, this might be an option, you know, and then you go further, like you said, that's all.
Yeah.
And, you know, probably will give us suggestions. I have no idea. I guess then we'll ask. They'll tell us to, yeah, because they're independent. So I'm just saying, I'll give a good segue if it does, then like you just said. Did you hear what you just said? Thank you. I, I wanted to, uh, thank you, Brian, and, and hope that you bring the gratitude on to, um, I think, public works and, and the rec department for the ice rink. Um, I very much enjoyed all the pictures and the accounting of various friends and neighbors who had a really good time at the ice rink. I think this has been executed amazingly well. Um, so thank you to the town staff for making that happen. Thank you for all the volunteers, because it, it sounds like there were a bunch of volunteers who were also involved. I don't know where all the skates came from, uh, that you can just use when you get, when you go to the skate rink. But yeah, there's a bunch of skates that people can use. I think most of them are kid sizes, right?
Yes, um, Skate Town did an excellent job in, in collecting the skates. They wanted the town to, to participate in that. I wanted absolutely no part of it. They stepped up to the plate and did a great job with it. DPW, I put one person in charge of it, that if its success or failure was on his shoulders. Him and his crew did an amazing job. They got old pieces of high school field, uh, turd, and they got boards and nailed them down, old benches, um, and it just came out great. So it was, it was a success. It lasted longer than we thought. Um, and, you know, I, I thank the Hartford chair, uh, for her work and, um, and getting that to us. So, yeah, a lot, a lot of thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much, Colleen, because this is a big success. Thank you. Brian, you look great on your shoes going across.
I'm better on skates, but that's all right.
How many takes?
None, one.
No.
One, two.
If it gets colder, we'll, we'll open it again.
I'll do it on skates. It'll be amazing.
But the, how does the ice, are we going to open the ice rink again?
It's going to stay in place.
Okay.
There'll be sign, no trespassing. It'll be locked, uh, by TPW. The lights will be reset to go off at the, uh, off.
Yeah.
Um, and then, you know, we have, we already have that all written out.
Yep.
It'll likely be tomorrow, uh, and, um, it'll, hopefully we'll get some cold weather again. It'll be in place. And then the, the fellows will tinker with the, the liner and sealing up what they can now, but it's, it's, it's working perfectly.
Lights look pretty cool. Sorry if I, I didn't, go ahead. Yeah, I'm so sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
So I did see something on social media, you probably all saw the same thing, or maybe Jen shared it, um, Katie, Chris, no. But water issues, it's not, like, there's not, what did Jen say?
When it gets used, the ice gets beat up.
Yeah, so what are we doing to, uh, do we add water? Is, how's that work in?
How do we maintain?
How do we maintain?
Right now, we're counting on the volunteers. Uh, when we bought the rink, you know, we didn't want to put that bird on DPW or the fire department. There are a couple of options. But I want you to consider these options, that when we're doing it, it means that there's ice on the, on the rink. When there's ice in the rink, it is very, very, very cold out. So now we're going to have, one of the options is to get a pump and pump it, drill a hole in the Crandall's ice, get electricity out to the pump, pump it from Crandall's to the rink, spray it, squeegee it. Um, right, not the easiest to do, then put the equipment away somewhere warm where it does the freeze, um, especially the pump. It, it's, it's a lot. Or, um, get the fire department to lay out hose, get a truck up there, take it offline, spray it, put the hose away, frozen as best they can, do all that. So, you know, at this point, we're counting on the resident and skate town to bucket by bucket, and it, and it stinks.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes mother nature takes care of it herself. And, you know, rain and a freeze, uh, you hope to get lucky that way, um, and it smoothes out. We'll lock it better, because someone really chewed it up when they went and tried to get on it earlier. Um, but again, skate, we didn't want the, the rink to be put out on social media. Skate Town saw that it was up and put it out there. We didn't want that.
Yeah.
But when they do that, people go, uh, people go, people damage the ice, not the, not the, uh, structure itself. So there's a lot to it. There was so much to try to get it to, to lay out just right and, and DPW and Skate Town hit it perfect, so.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I think it's, a, a lot of people really enjoyed it, so thank you for those efforts. Uh, I did have one question, uh, that I think our state delegation touched on it. I just wanted to clarify, because I think I remember this from our fore. Um, there was some mention of an instance in Coventry, maybe, where the town's salt storage, leaked and contaminated neighboring wells. Um, we, we don't have that concern in town, do we?
There, there, I read that report
Yeah.
on the Coventry issue. There's this much difference. It's solely related to the storage of salt for years in, in that facility, which has been repaired. They built a park, I believe, right next to it now, um, and they're going to have to, you know, they, they got issues. I mean, there's, there's no way around it. That's, that's all it is. Um, very clear. I spoke to Eastern Highlands about it. Um, that is completely a different problem, uh, compared to town.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to, I, I know that when we saw it, it was up high and there were, you told, you talked to us about certain, um, certain things that were in place to make sure it wasn't leaking anywhere.
Ours is drawn tight, yeah. Uh, the town did a good job for it, seeing it, and there's been some repairs, but it's really in good shape.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Brian on town manager's report?
It's too bad we don't have any upper funds left to get a Zamboni.
Hey, now we're going to have So, uh, the next item on our agenda is the adoption of minutes. We have the January ninth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes before us. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Salute.
Jacob made the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Colleen, second. Is there any comments, questions, requested changes on the minutes? No. Okay. So we'll do a roll call vote again. Uh, Alex?
Yes.
Joe?
Hi.
Jen? You're muted.
Sorry, I.
Thank you. Chris?
Hi.
Colleen?
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
And also an I, so that is unanimous. All right, now we're in correspondence and council. You're up, Colleen.
Oh, geez, okay. I know. It always felt like it crept up on me in the agenda. So, yeah, I'm going to do this. So I have a few emails, including one tonight that I did, was able to skim through. So, um, we got one concerned, um, regulations of backyard gun shooting, permit was one. Um, then we got another one regarding possible having a resolution to ceasefire in Gaza. Right? Um, then one was sent Then one was sent strictly to commission with disabilities, but I just wanted to share those regarding A D A concerns. I believe over Crandall, I thought I had it written down here. But our great public works department of parks fixed it already. So that has been addressed. And then today we just received an email regarding the Board of Edu, Board of Edu, Board of Education budget. I don't know if I missed any, I think that was all of them.
Thank you.
Yep.
So next is the chairperson's report. Just a reminder to town council members that the Board of Ed is considering their budget right now. The Board of Ed Chair was nice enough to share the budget calendar and mark some important meetings on that, which I did share with the town council members. All of the Board of Ed budget meetings are open, they're publicly noticed. For anyone in the public who wishes to become involved in the Board of Ed process, you are welcome. Road Salt Task Force is back here on Thursday, it's gonna be really exciting, lots of information, please come. A chair hour was scheduled for the sixteenth and was canceled due to the weather that night. I was kind of bummed, but Tony Holt, the Board of Ed Chair, Andy Powell, the Chair of Planning and Zoning, and Gene Cost, who's the Chair of the Water Permission, were all scheduled to join me that night. And unfortunately, we couldn't meet, but I am having chair again on February first. Linda Byam from the Library Foundation, Andy Powell from Planning and Zoning, and I think Tony Holt from Board of Ed are going to join me again. So hopefully, if anybody wants to come and and sit with us at the library and talk about all the things, we'll be there. And that's it for me.
Want to add, I know that was one thing, but it's not your turn yet.
Now it's your turn. Fourteen communications petitions.
I just have a comment on your, you're gonna comment on my thing?
Yeah. Oh, boy, that's interesting. Go ahead. Brian, do you want to know, but we're getting a little hungry here.
I was just gonna say, Susan, the Chair of the Commission with People with Disabilities, mentioned that she did get an email from you and she kind of be do go one to one.
Yeah, yeah, she's coming.
Yeah.
Some of these are going to be fun to schedule.
So, yeah.
So, but yeah, no, no, you're good. That's good. Do you have any other communications you want to talk about?
No.
No, you're good. Is anybody else? I know, I know, but I gotta give everybody their turn. Anybody want to talk, want to talk?
No.
All right, so now we're at item fifteen, which is public participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council. Got a three-minute limit this time. If you're in the room, please come up to the table, state your name and address. If you're on Zoom, raise your little Zoom hand or hit star nine. Again, we'll ask you for your name and address. Sean?
Always.
You're reliable.
And forever. It seems. Sean Lappin, one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. I'll make this brief. While I appreciate the town's effort this week, I do have reservations about whether or not this will continue, but for now I'm satisfied. My hope is that this work continues on my property and then a viable, long-term solution is on the horizon. Finally, I share the same same sentiments as Chairperson Murray or Stargarter, sorry.